Six, Dave, six. Time. Six.
Okay, thank you. Hey, and your thing on the second is at what time?
Okay.
Hold up. Meeting order? At six o'clock. Can we have a roll call please?
Councilor DeSoto.
Here.
Councilor Shanda.
Yeah.
Councilor Spurlock.
President.
Here.
Here. Please join the place.
The Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with never-ending justice for all.
Next, we have election of new council officers, mayor and vice mayor. My understanding is that this happens first in December.
Yeah, I think that's not, this isn't right.
This is...
Oh, okay.
Mark?
That was a surprise.
Do you want to do it now?
No.
No, let's go put your name.
We've got enough other stuff, let's keep... I'd like to keep everybody... Mark, just keep everybody in place right now, let's get through what we guys get through and we'll deal with this next. Is everybody...
Sounds like nobody wants to be there. I think I agree, I'm just kidding. Make a motion to table the item. Okay? Just for a second?
I'll say it. I'll say it.
Seconded by Bruce, motion to table the item. Do we have to have public comment on this item? No.
Again, if you have public comment on anything on the agenda or anything you do, like a thought.
We're gonna table an item though.
You don't have to have it... If you don't have to discuss it, you don't have to ask for public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, if there's a motion in the second then? Is there any questions about this? Okay. Call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Thank you. That was unanimous. We're gonna table item four. Item five, approval of the agenda. Generally, this is a formality, but do you have one request to add something to the agenda? Perhaps Mark can fill us in? Are you prepared to do that?
Sure. I received a package from the Pacific Union.
Indian Pacific?
Indian Pacific, yes. In regards to a lease that we have, a current lease that we have, for property that currently encompasses the engine house, House of Public Works facility. They sent documentation saying that they want to remove the engine house out of our lease so that we keep a right of way to get to the Public Works facility and of course the public facility would stay in the lease as well. And our cost for the lease dropped down to their minimum lease that they have for the facility. It was something I was looking to try and get on this agenda, but unfortunately didn't have the time to get it on with the staff report and everything. So, they are itching to get word back from the city as to what the city wants to do in regards to this lease, it needs to be signed. I didn't want to just sign it myself to Val Pramison, the city council, and have it to the public because it does involve, most likely, the demolish, the removal of the engine house, which the state's been struggling with because of this governance issue. So, I'm just looking to see if we can get this added to the agenda and then give the authorization to sign the legal statement.
If it's come up, if it's needed response and it has come up, it's related to put on the agenda, the forfeit vote to...
So, it will take a forfeit vote to add this to the item?
Yes.
To the agenda today?
I will be adding.
Okay. Bruce?
I'll move, put on the agenda on the new item, business D.
I'll leave it.
New business D?
I'll leave it.
I would agree.
Okay, D. And, or what are we calling it?
Thirteen D.
We just call it UP lease?
UP lease? Yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry, who seconded?
I will.
Josh can.
Bruce made the motion, Josh seconded. Call vote, all in favor of adding item thirteen D, UP lease? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous?
Yes.
So, we're gonna add that to our agenda.
In that case, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, I'll second that?
You have it, you have it.
I seconded that? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that was unanimous as well. Now, we have item six, approval of the minutes from November 2nd, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 2nd, 2017.
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we have committee reports. Item seven, A, Economic Development and Tourism. Bruce?
Mark, do you have your calendar handy?
I do.
Both Josh and I are available for meeting the week after Thanksgiving. Yeah, yeah, I'm just, this week after, fine, thanks. For an economic development meeting.
Thirty?
The work you done?
Thirty.
Let's do that, yeah. Okay, so, what time, six o'clock?
Is it after Robert's?
Do you want to push it back earlier? Because we always go at six o'clock because I have a job.
Five o'clock?
You have a job now? What?
What's that?
I said, "Do you have a job now?"
He doesn't have one.
Yeah.
He's in between.
Yeah.
School hasn't started yet.
That's correct, that's correct.
But he's still a fireman.
So, thirty to five? How's that? Or do you want to do afternoon?
That was five to me.
Five, let's do five. That'll take care, I think Richard has to be there too, that'll take care of him. So, that's all we have right now, the meeting, five o'clock, nine thirty.
Thank you, Bruce. Next is Finance, the Finance Committee have not met since our last meeting. I was asked to provide some information by the auditor the other day. The city has a new auditor, audit vendor, I guess?
Yes.
What's his name?
Charles.
Charles?
Healy, or I forgot his last name.
Okay. So, he asked me to, this is Finance-related insofar as it's an audit, but I just wanted to convey to the council what he asked me, basically like, if the council is in good standing and essentially, something about how, are there any ethical issues with regard to the council? So, he was sort of probing the mayor for, I guess, just doing sort of due diligence about sort of how the ethics of the council are, and so...
And what do you do, Tom?
I informed him that we've all had our ethics training, thanks to Mr. Kenny, and that we've all saw additional trainings at the League of California Cities Conferences and that the council is, is and has been behaving ethically, in my opinion. So, that's what they all, all of you wanted to know. He didn't ask any specifics about finances or anything, so... So, that's all. Do we need to have a Finance Committee meeting to address any of the, as he works through the audit process?
Right now, he's just doing preliminary stuff, so he's given panel listing things that, for her to work on, and he's collecting a lot of stuff for himself to work on, and he's coming back next week for a couple days, he's also, he's working throughout the county, he's done a number of audits, but he didn't really begin working on the city's audit beginning of the year.
Okay.
And we will be doing a major budget review probably around the beginning of the year as well.
Okay. Alright, so we'll move on to Public Service and Services have not met either. We'll move on to Airport. Does the Airport Committee met?
Yes, well, we've got some progress to report. First of all, the next Airport Committee will be in noon here on the 28th.
Right here or the airport?
Yeah, let's do it at the Chamber, that's a good idea. Do it at the Chamber if we can, and if not, in the office over there. One of the exciting things, and I just learned it just before the meeting started, talking with Mr. Kenny, there's been a question about the legal status of the property, the seventy-eight point four acres of property to the east of the airport, and for a long time, everyone considered that that was all the airport. In fact, I've heard a couple of times from Mr. Kiesler of a guy who offered $10 million to put a solar area up there and was told, "Can't do that because it's part of the airport." Well, we actually went back and checked on the lease that we've given to the city back in 1964 from the county when they transferred the property, and Mr. Kenny has looked at it, and I won't put words in his mouth, but I think he agrees, the bottom line is he agrees that this is the case. That property was not part of the airport, the deed specifically says, "Airport facility", that means the operator for airport facilities, not the building, and then there's the other premises, the other property, and that, the only stipulation on that is that it can't interfere with the operation of the airport. And along with that, the grant assurances that come with grants that come from the FAA say the same thing. So, what that basically means is, is that in terms of finding an avenue to make the airport self-sustaining, we believe that we've got a real good opportunity to make use of that property up there in various ways, we're exploring one or two or three more right now, but the point is that that could turn around and not only, that would provide a lot of revenue to the city, I think.
That's great news. I just wanted to ask, is there any indication, so, it can't interfere with the operations of the airport, do you know if the FAA has to sign off on proposed activities?
No, no.
It just, it would just be a...
It's a reversion clause. An airport property is, the airport may be used for any purpose, it doesn't interfere with the airport, we bring you to those kinds of reverts and grand law.
Okay. Well, that's a question that we've been sort of asking for a long time and speculating about for a long time, so, thanks.
Actually, Julie can put her fingers on the information first, so thank you, Miss City Clerk.
Surprise, surprise, Julie. Okay, well, that's, that's great news. Anything else at the airport at this time?
Yeah, just tell them that right now.
Thank you. Emergency plane task force? Has not met. Veterans Memorial?
Has not met, till the sidewalks have.
Alright.
Before we go, Dave, can we look at the setting up of a committee meeting? I just want to kind of get this out in the air right now while we're talking about, both Dave and I are on the committee together, didn't get a chance to talk about this. I do know that we want to start planning towards Memorial Day. We didn't do anything for Veterans Day, it was just a matter of everyone around the county that had been supporting us was already overloaded with other events they were going to, particularly at the Sculpture Garden. But with regards to lining things up and doing a really good event ceremony, et cetera, for the upcoming Memorial Day, I'd like to plan on having a meeting in probably January when we start talking about that, but I want to get the word out and have enough people over there who can do it. That will be...
Me, yes sir.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. The next is the Mossbury Trail Committee. We are still, so, was it the last meeting?
Yep.
The last meeting, the council adopted a resolution, and we had members of the National Association here who presented their, the proposal that they are writing, sort of in partnership with the city to present to the UP Real Estate. While, while we now have authority from the council to go forward with that, we want to make sure that it's all ready to go and goes to Roseville before it goes to Omaha. So, we're, we're just in a communications lag right now with Roseville. Particularly, one of the reasons why I'm glad that we're addressing the UP lease tonight is so that they, so Roseville can't hang, hang that over our head anymore. We want to be in good standing with UP in terms of, we're gonna be making this ask of them going forward. Anyhow, we were basically prepared to send that proposal to Roseville, we're just making sure that we send it to all the right people and all the relevant people, and that confirmation of that has not happened yet, but it's in progress, I'm working on it. My anticipation is that it'll get sent out next week to Roseville.
Mr. Mayor, a question?
Yes, sir.
I didn't have a chance to find it, but is the report that you had submitted to the last meeting, is that available on the website?
It should be part of the agenda packet.
Why, I'm saying, could you separate it out?
Oh, okay.
I'd like to be able to make some reference to it and applaud the effort that both, the two of you, you and Mr. Spurlock and Mr. Kiesler, put into this. I think people need to get a real understanding of how this would all work, and I think having something I can reference on the website would be great.
Okay, I can work on that. Thanks, Josh. One other piece I forgot to mention was, since the, since the, that proposal had been written, the lead designer, Tom Hesselbense, also has indicated, he's warmed up to the idea of a suspension bridge, where there needs to be a bridge, which is the Mount of Hedge Creek across the river, a suspension bridge rather than the prefabricated steel bridge that requires a sky crane to be, to be placed. Thank you. And so, while a suspension bridge requires a little bit more ongoing maintenance, it doesn't require a $70,000 sky crane to be put into place, so it could potentially drop the cost of the project by around $70,000. The bridge itself, I believe, is less expensive as well, so, a big cost savings there, and if you want to see an example of the type of suspension bridge that he has in mind, the one that they just put over in the Cloud River, and I'll include pictures of that in the, on the website presentation.
We want to get more attention for all the things you're doing there.
Agreed. Moving on to the Broadband Committee, is there any motion on this?
No, we're kind of, I think we're kind of in a laze right now, under three cities seem to really perk up whenever we try to have a meeting, so I guess one of us is gonna have to push it along here.
I agree, I mean, my, my time between family and work and Mossbury and cannabis have been, it's a lot, so...
I'll check with Tim Sterns to find out, see if he has something on the back.
Yeah, Tim in Barrow, so, Barrow County is helping me with that, so, move that forward soon. Beautification is the whole here?
Now, but we suspended any...
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we didn't meet this.
Any more meetings?
So, the Beautification Committee will be meeting in March?
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, we have the Marijuana Task Force. As everyone knows, we've been meeting over the past several months, and we have an ordinance, two ordinances to bring to the council for a first reading tonight, so, that'll be, you'll get the update, it's on the agenda. Finally, oh, that's, that's, we're done with committee reports. Okay, so moving on to item eight, announcements and public comment. Now's the time for anyone to come up to the podium and give us any announcements or public comments. This time is reserved for items that are not on the agenda tonight, because there will be specific public comment period for each of those items. Oops, sorry. You can make it to the podium.
The chairs are crunched. Mario, you know, fifty-five, twelve, ten, eleven. Council, the council that I sat on several years ago also made, made law. In fact, Mr. Art was here two weeks ago asking to see that law be implemented. My discussion on that law was about the historic district, the facade, the maintenance and repair. Mr. Art and council came up with carrot and stick approach, and I pretty much think it was a lot of Mr. Art's plan, and the idea was that we would go make assessments on all the buildings of the historic district and then offer that they needed to be repaired and that we would be rather lenient, if people just did work on the buildings. We would take that into credit and give them more time on the more severe, the more severe repairs. There were a couple of Kalsington owners at that time, which are kind of still, and the stick part of it was, it was an ever-increasing motivational law and punitive law, I should say. And what we did with that is, if things were getting done, we'd be lenient, if things weren't getting done, they'd be cited, they'd be cited up to a daily citation when they were really extravagant. The point of this conversation is that we created that law, and one of the things about laws that you create is that you really need to have the people in behind you in support of what you're doing. I believe that law is good and will be good sometime in the future, but what happened is, we immediately sent a subcommittee of the Planet Commission out, and they got known as the Little Ladies of Straw Hats, and they went around and started marking up everyone's buildings, the owners immediately drew red flags over it. From there, we sent notices to all the owners of the issues to be resolved, and a lot of the owners did a lot of work, and during that time, we did get the travelers painted, and we did get Mr. Juarez's theater painted, so we were happy of the results, but there were several owners that didn't do anything. And the process then was, they would be summoned in front of council. So, at the time, there was a recession going on, a lot of people were going underwater, council stood at the dais, the people stood in front of council, and council crumbled. I mean, they literally crumbled. They just didn't really want to uphold the law. Since then, the council that replaced us, me and Mr. Art were recalled, did absolutely nothing with the law. And even though the historic district's been an issue and a problem, they felt between the business owners and the process, it wasn't something they wanted to get involved in. We did actually go so far as, as find one owner and take one owner to court. That particular case, the lawyer felt, the off, I'm sorry, the judge felt she didn't understand the law and ended up with a $50 or $100 fine for something that was supposed to be gradually going up. Very disappointing. So...
Mario? It's been about three minutes, can you wrap that up?
I'll wrap that up.
Thank you.
So, my point is, when you create a law, you want to have good support from the community. I think the idea of having task force is a great idea. I'm glad that we had the task force group that we had, it was a good group of property owners, businessmen, and people involved in the community. I feel comfortable with the decisions they made and brought to council, and I hope you support their desires. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll just remind everyone that this item is on our agenda and also have a public comment period for the cannabis regulations.
About that, Sarah Pride, 4202 Dunham Avenue. What I wanted to bring up to the council's attention, I know that the city's having a lot of problems with the finances, and I'd really like it if people would look into the fact that we own the water bottling plant. We also own the water rights, even though I've been told differently because I was here when we bought the Dunham Water Court from Louis Toms. Okay? I don't see why we can't stop leasing the water bottling plant to whoever's running it right now and run it as an extension of the city with the profit going to the management of the state. I thought it was a good idea, but you guys should look into that.
Thank you.
Peter Art, 5859 Saturnino Avenue. Two items, one is sort of on the agenda, and that is Mossbury Falls and the city's quest to find a new engineer or safety area. I think it's an extraordinary accomplishment for the city of Dunsmere, who unanimously passed a resolution last year, setting an aspirational goal of having a safe trail to Mossbury Falls by the spring of 2018. If I read my trusty Dunsmere news correctly, the goal is that the trail will be available to the public by summer of 2018. That may be a little ambitious, but for a goal that has eluded the city for decades and decades, including the transigence of the St. Germain Foundation, I think it was a fantastic bit of work, building a partnership, building a coalition, and getting it done. So, I especially single out the mayor as a very effective link. Supervisor Ed Valenzuela is here, but Ed Valenzuela came to every single meeting and was prepared to back us up at the county if we needed it. So, I agree for Dunsmere, for the Southern Siskiyou region, for those that value nature and don't like to see their kids run over on the tracks, it's a very good thing for everybody. My second item, and I only have seven copies, I'll give Julie the last one at the end, is, for my background, I have an interest in renewable energy, and what I'm passing around tonight is something put out by the State of California, and the most important page is page three, which basically, page one and two give you all the benefits to a community like Dunsmere to have an electric vehicle charging station in your town, especially if the idea is that Tesla remains proprietary of, Mr. Craig and I fought to get a Tesla refueling station in Dunsmere, in the end, we lost out to Mount Shasta, but it's still the case that if you have a Chevy Bolt, you can't plug into a Tesla recharging station. There are going to be generic charging stations all up and down Interstate 5, the American Highway, from San Diego to British Columbia, and the State of California is willing to help fund communities that are willing to put in an electric charging station.
It's been about three minutes, I'm gonna wrap it up if you can't think of it.
The notion is, we have at least three gas stations, I'm aware of, in Dunsmere that will never be gas stations again, why couldn't we convert at least one of those into an electric charging station to the benefit of the community and economy? So, I hope when you have your economic development meeting, you'll look at the site as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments at this time?
Yes, Tom Art, United States of America, Dunsmere Avenue, Antioch. That's what makes me so concerned about the engine house. It's a 130-year-old building, one of the oldest ones in town. If it gets tore down, it'll never be there again, it's into that history, but the view shed is pretty beautiful from there too. If it is gone, I was against turning it down before, but after sitting at the restaurant and looking out for it the other day, it'd be a beautiful view from the restaurant too, without the building and stuff. Okay, there. No, thanks.
Center roller, go sit back.
Uh, we're currently, let's grab it. A small point of maybe housekeeping, it still says the readings are on channel 15 and I'm not sure they are anymore, so, can we put them back on to me? That would be my request. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Alright. It's welcome to second now. Okay, we'll close the podium for public comment then, and we are moving on to item nine, announcements and reports from council and staff. Start with Mr. Eric Brand again.
Um, just, you've already alluded to, we have our auditor on site, and I spent a couple hours with him yesterday, and I was excited with him, really excited, out of our treasure, Mario was actually there, film a model as well. Excited to have him here, he's got some wonderful questions, he's very concise and well-entertained, so I think we're gonna have a very thorough audit this year, excited for that.
Alright, Marty?
Do you have anything?
Bruce?
With regards to Mr. Art's comment about the charging stations, we do have one behind Yaks, and that's been there for quite a while, but I agree that we want to pursue more, I know it was looked at a while back, could we add that to the Economic Development Committee please? That's all I have.
You, Dave?
First of all, I'd like to say, welcome, Mr. Kenny, it's always nice to see you here.
It's always a pleasure.
Mr. Merrill, I understand that it's Beard Month for sheriffs?
I want to talk about that here, does this sound?
Okay, well, I'm gonna give you all two. Okay, I'm gonna give you opportunity. I would like everybody to know that this Sunday is Global Thanksgiving from three to five at Community Building. It is encouraged, if you want to bring a side dish, bring one from your ethnic heritage. So you don't have to bring nothing. Just come have dinner with us. It's sponsored by the Rotary. There's an awards dinner, December sixteenth, at six p.m. It's for the Business of the Year, which is Tony Parrishaw. And the Ambassador of the Year is Ron Cloud. So...
And the service organization is this, the Light Church?
Christian Life.
Christian Light Church.
Christian Light Church, okay. Right. The Candles in the Canyon is the second. And that'll be, there's pancakes with Santa at the Rotary. There's Santa at the Pizza Factory in the evenings, as well as the tree lighting. And that is the second. It's also, Bruce, Giving Tuesday? When is Giving Tuesday, Bruce?
Tuesday, uh, twenty-eighth, right?
November twenty-eighth. November twenty-eighth? And that's an opportunity to give just a couple dollars, ten dollar minimum, right? Ten dollar minimum to local nonprofit organizations in town. Or wherever you want to give it to. But like, you can give to our own resource center. There's a lot of things out there that you can give to, so that's one thing. Wanted to mention that. And I would also like to feedback on Mario's. There's people that like to see these meetings back on TV. So I don't understand why, but we need to get them back on TV. It's our obligation to get these meetings to the people out there. They can't make it here. But we, as a council, need to make that happen. So I expect direction to be given somewhere, somehow, to resolve this situation. It's been far too long. So, anyway, big over.
To that, I'd like to respond to the televised aspect of the council meetings. The, they were televised for a few meetings, but it's never been in a contract. So there's no contract obligation currently. But that is something that we're working with the Siskiyou Media Council to come up with a new contract. And if that could be a part of the act. So it'll come back to council here when we have a new contract.
Are there other agencies that we can get this service from, that we can go up to? Is this the only one?
That I'm aware of.
Are you referring to getting them aired on the media council's re-airing? Or you're referring to the live airing?
The live, yeah.
The live airing on, that's through Northland, so...
Well, that's part of it, as well as...
We just need better services. I...
I'll say this again. I said it before. I was very involved with Siskiyou Media Council when Mr. Messer was here. And when this whole idea of responding to making the whole chamber different and everything else we went through, we had proposed a plan for taking the audiovisual system and doing various things with it. And throughout that, and throughout the history of the city before that, before anything came along with video, anywhere on the web, there was always a TV camera that was on and went to the cable station. Now somehow or other, there's been a change, and I don't understand where it is, but I'm as frustrated as everybody else. I'd like to have this broadcast, and if we have to stay up to midnight to do it, let's get a contract and let's get it up to the next meeting. My feeling.
Just to feedback on that, my understanding was the equipment that we have there is outdated.
But there are SDC, there are SD standard digital that can go to HD and can be put up there, so...
I remember that was our whole, obviously, equipment there that we never moved with.
Yeah, but those are like thirty dollars, I believe, so...
I think it's a little more. Is that what we're doing? We will put on the agenda for future, but there was a whole lot of equipment that we needed. I think something as simple as contacting Northland, having them come back out, which they've been on several times when we were going through that process, to just determine what equipment is not there.
And bought.
Bought. I think it's as simple as that. But we do have services. It should be relatively simple to get at least back to where it was. Let's remember, though, that people watching on TV, the live Northland one, there were lots of complaints about that camera and the audio.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Image quality and all that. So we sought to improve that with these cameras and distributing the meetings online. And that has happened essentially every meeting. And that's in HD and that's good quality. So just, since we're talking about this, I agree. Let's call Mario's. Let's figure out what's going on. But if anybody wants to see video of old meetings, or a grocery meeting, they are up on the city's website, in HD, and there's much better video quality and sound.
They're also available on YouTube.
Mr. Merrill, I have...
And I, probably just one small detail. They are automatically posted on the city's Facebook page as well, when they're released, so.
It's usually a few days after.
Yeah, it is. But you can subscribe to just the videos or on Facebook, you'll get them up.
Isn't that a...
One more thing I forgot, Tom. I always wondered if we could direct staff into looking at something. Have you guys been over to the Chamber of Commerce and you seen Richard Dinses's Chamber of Commerce business card? Look, you turn it over, it's got this thing on the back. And then, Richard, today, he set up a smartphone with his reader. So you read this thing, and it tells you. Okay, I'm a reader right now. Don't you often understand what reader means?
No, he's still working backwards.
I still got an eight-track. Come on, I'm doing really good right now. This tells you everything about the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce. Events, times, dates. I'll think, well, why couldn't the city council, the city of Dunsmere, have something like that? Hey, over the best water on earth. Look, we got railroad day, we got all these things. It would be a way to enhance Dunsmere without ever having to do any homework. Just hit the phone. Oh, hey, man, fishing, waterfalls? It's just something I think that we could all have this...
I think it's a great idea.
On our cards. When we pass our cards, they go flip.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you very much. So, Doc, if we could maybe have them look in and see what it would cost to have this play on ours?
I think it's a great idea.
Josh leaves it.
All right, thank you. Josh, anything?
Nothing. Do it more. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to check in on the visioning session. Did we set an date for that?
I was looking at the end of this, towards the end of the month, but it's gonna have to be the beginning of November at this point.
Beginning of December?
December.
Okay.
Turkey move, stocking move.
So I'll send out an email. I'll try to get something out tomorrow, put it into the city council. We'll have to do some public, uh, airbag.
Certainly. Bruce?
If I could, you came, Mr. Brannigan, to the Rotary Club on Wednesday morning and gave a very short, concise plea for the stakeholders. If you could, I'd like you to take a moment to do that here, just 'cause this'll go out on the video, so...
Sure. Essentially, what I was asking you, the Rotary for is them to run, be involved in the process for the vision admission statement to be raised. And also, after that, we'll be doing a goal setting. And also mention about the upcoming water, urban water and solid waste grid study. So there's two fronts that we're looking at, getting stakeholders involved. But as far as the vision admission in the goal setting area, what I'm looking at is really to try to get the word out, to get across section, to please everyone here. We don't normally get a full house, so I'm glad you're here. We're looking at trying to establish, or we're going to establish, what is the mission for the city of Dunsmere? What do we want the city to look like in five years and ten years? And with that, how our, what our staff and what the city's gonna do has a mission to help support that. And then after that, we'll go into the goal settings. And really, the goal setting is important, because we're gonna be putting that into a budget process. So the goals, we can have all the goals in the world, but if we don't have the people and the money, the goals aren't gonna go anywhere. So I'm looking at, in the next year's budget, to roll goals in that will help get us to our vision as being a priority for funding. So it's really one of those things, if we're gonna get somewhere, I want you to be involved to help establish what that vision is. And then we'll look at getting goals that'll be something of accountability once they're funded, for what resources we have to get us there. And that's really the way I can see, we'll use our limited resources that we have, the staff and money, to achieve actual vision. So it's really a budget process in the goal side. But the mission and vision is something that I'm looking to place, say, this is what we stand for to this city.
I just have two quick comments. One is, I'm also encouraged by seeing everyone in tonight as well. It's something that we don't often get. And if there were just the amount of people in this room tonight at this vision meeting, it would be more than we've ever had since I've been involved. And so it's really important to be a part of this process. We finally have a city manager who I hope will be here for a while. We finally have a lot of the pieces in place that allow us to do this sort of actually plan for the future of this city. And I'm very encouraged by that. So I just really want to say, please, if you can, be a part of that visioning, goal setting for the city. And bring everybody you can, because the more perspective we have in the room, the better, in my opinion. And the only thing that I was gonna add to that was, I know you don't have a date in mind, but obviously, six o'clock on a Thursday, this many people can make it. But are you looking at a weekend day or a weekday, or is there any...
I was looking at, during the journey, weekday.
Weekday?
If that's, doesn't, I'm looking at two meetings, hopefully, possibly in December. And then follow-up meetings after all the holidays. I'm looking at two to three meetings for the mission vision. And then they're going to goal setting. I don't want this to be a long, drawn-out process. So I'm hoping to have things wrapped up by February as far as the goal setting at the end there. Because that's when, at the end of the cover, we're gonna really start getting into the budget plan.
So just, if anybody has any thoughts on when to have these types of community events where we get together and talk about vision, and when's a good time to meet? Not everybody can make it in the evenings, but not everybody can make it noon on a Tuesday either.
See, we had one on Saturday afternoon. It seemed like a lot of people showed up.
It was about half as much as we're here, but yeah. It was more than, otherwise, it was eighteen people.
It was also Christmas time, though. Christmas time, Saturdays, people would be chatting.
So anyway, I mean, I agree. Sometimes weekends are better. But anyway, if you have thoughts about that, please share it with the city manager or with any of us. And we want your perspective on when to have those meetings.
And when we get a date, it'll be put in paper and on our website. Website will be linked to Facebook and Twitter, and I know Madi has her network, and she sent that out for social media stuff as well. So it'll be posted on the website and in paper, so please keep your ear to the ground and please do us.
All right. Before we move on, Mario?
Thank you very much. As the customer said, we have no shade November. The sheriff was kind enough to allow us not to shave, which has been really exciting. And the trade-off, it is. I've kind of finally come to the point in my life where I actually grow a beard of some sort and nothing else to shave it off. So that's really cool. The trade-off is, of course, that each deputy who participates in the shade of November takes those monies that would be spent on the supplies, add those to the donations that the sheriff is already gathering, and hopefully into the larger package, and then those to the charities. So if you start seeing us around, we're looking a little more scruffy. It's not just because we're scruffy. We're actually doing it for a good reason, and it's kind of a nice opportunity. A little bit of, I guess, a feedback from our drug takeback. Remember, a couple weeks ago, we had boxes set out throughout the county to take prescription medications so they didn't go out or go into the sewer. We gathered in Siskiyou County, two hundred and fifty-eight pounds of medication. That's not the cap, that's not the plastic, that's not the bags, that's just the capsules or whatever they sell. So obviously, that's two hundred and fifty-eight pounds of medication that could go to a lot of things. They were able to take it down. It combined with other places, was incinerated, so it was essentially disposed of. So we're gonna be doing this twice a year, in the spring and the fall. So as you have medications, they expire, the cast said you're not gonna know what to do with them. Just simply put them in a bag, put them somewhere safe, and the spring will have another collection. You can bring it back and do that. Part of the change, the weather comes to shift change. So you're gonna start seeing new deputies on day shift that were on night shift, the night shift guys on day shift. If you would, kind of give them a week or so, be a little extra kind, as they're learning to sleep on the wrong side of the day in the bed again. We're able to do that. We have a couple new deputies that are gonna be working in the South Canada area. They're gonna be coming out from the courts. Once they kind of get a little bit settled, I'll, of course, bring them in, introduce them to the council as well. Other than that, things are going well. If you have questions or concerns about what's going on or happening, I'm really easy to reach. You can message with me at City Hall or come in and talk to me, and we'll work on a solution for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Merrill?
Yes, sir.
Just want to take a moment, see if I can get some chairs for the people right here. Are there more chairs over there?
Yes.
You handed all of this.
Is there need for more chairs, or are we good?
We're good.
Okay. Well, thank you for everyone. Okay, we're gonna move on to, we got through everyone, right?
Yep.
Moving on, we don't have a presentation tonight, so we'll move on to item eleven, our consent agenda.
I think the motion that we adopt a consent agenda.
Second act.
Okay, no questions, and we'll have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Madi?
Just a second. I have a little question. What is this LTC thing? You all surprised?
The LTC is, has to do with, it's something we get every year, and it has to do with the money that we get put into our tax, tax and stuff.
So it's our policy, it's our only setback council in the budget?
It comes every year, every year, years.
Yes.
All right. So that was unanimous, then opposed, right? Okay. Moving on to our public hearing, which is not numbered, we have the CDBG application. So we'll have a presentation from Jim Cuthbert?
Well, it's, he's really here at my request. I have my CDPG experience is limited, so I've asked him to be here to assist. I just want to kind of introduce that the, this is a process, it's another way, sometime, we've met twice before to listen to the public, to bring ideas for possible applications. At the first reading, we, first meeting, we had three ideas that were presented. The state had made changes to the process and the no subprime availability. So the second one, we came back, and there were only two projects that were recommended at that time for council consideration. So here we are, this is at the meeting where we're looking to see if the, if anybody has any comments or questions about the process and if the council would like to ask, give direction for staff to work with about the resolution and have staff go forward with the application process. So with that being said, I'd really like to turn it over to Jim, if that's okay, to give greater details on the process.
I think you've covered everything. There's nothing else to say, no. All I can do is reiterate what Mark has already said. Yes, you've had two meetings already. There are a number of projects that came out. These two, a superlateral project in backflow valves for low and moderate income families. And the business loan assistance program are the two that seem to make sense. I do have to warn you that the state is moving from granting thirty-five of these to granting ten. And there's a lot more communities that are seeking them this year, so it's gonna be a lot tougher. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't go out and start a business thinking you're gonna get a business loan because this is gonna be very, very competitive. I normally try to kind of be perky and excited about these programs, but this one's gonna be tough. It's gonna be tough for anybody to get a grant. But nonetheless, this community has done very well with these grants, and I think you should go forward with it. It doesn't cost you anything to write your grant, so... And those are the two items that have come to the top of the process. So at this time, you might want to ask for further comment from them as a public hearing, unless you have questions of me or Mario.
Does anyone have questions for Jim or Mark before we comment? All right, I think Jim, you'll hang there to answer your questions. One public comment on this item, on this hearing?
Could you go from here? It's short. It didn't work though.
All allowed.
I think the lateral thing, there's some serious issues in the city of Dunsmere. Backup preventers, that should actually be on a lot of houses. But that's a critical thing for the city, and the city's insurance program would be really nice to have the one-way licenses and stuff. one-way licenses installed. But there are several super lateral programs. We had this lateral program under Brenda, it wasn't advertised, we didn't really aggressively go out and seek, but I know of at least twenty customers that really could utilize this right now, so I hope we have some opportunity to begin.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
To speak to the business loan program, I have several tenants in Dunsmere. I actually have three more prospective tenants that want to move to Dunsmere and start businesses. But it's very, very difficult for a small business to get their startup capital. So what I've observed over my years here is, if you go to Jedi and learn and have a business plan and proper accounting, and you're lucky enough to pair it with a city that has community block development grants available, it is a very good combination to get businesses started in a small town. So it was very helpful in the years past. The city, for whatever reason, stopped doing it. I think the sooner it can reengage in the business of integrating businesses with low-cost loans that are designed to bring back local economies, the sooner Dunsmere recovers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? We know Julie already knows the names of the people who spoke earlier, but if there are any more public comments, state your name. Nope? Okay. No questions then, Jim? One quick thing. So I think I agree, you know, we should apply for it, because it's free to apply for it, and to make sure that we're eligible, well, should be, should be granted. You said that the state went from thirty-five to ten in terms of granting these?
The number of grants.
The number of grants, okay. But in the, in the past, we received one of those thirty-five?
Yes.
Several times, right?
Over the last thirty years, you've probably received ten, the last thirty years.
Each year there are thirty-five, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a number of things happening with this grant program. One, the rich, the pretend Trump budget that was floated wiped out this program altogether, because it's federal money. So everybody's a little nervous that it's going to go away. Number two is, they're just trying to reduce their workload, because having thirty-five communities our size doing things make them think, and they would like to stop doing that. So they're reducing their number.
Wait, that's not true.
It is for the state, the state does not have to think if they don't want to. So anyway, there's a lot of, lot of things going on. One of the, one of the things that Dunsmere has running against them is they're no longer a core community by the state's method of counting. If you were one morning and the next morning you weren't, because their accounting changed. So, and that runs against you, you won't get as many points. So there's a lot of stuff going on, but it's worth a try. It doesn't harm the city to try to get whatever grants it can get. Doesn't, doesn't take much staff time to do it.
I have a question. There's three here.
There's, there's actually-
I understand only two.
Yeah, there's actually two grants and general administration.
Right. So how does that work, Jim? And can you prioritize with the state? Like, we feel that the sewer is more priority than the others, supposedly that is. Can you prioritize with the state or not?
Well, there's actually only two programs. General admin is something that give you, give your staff, you've got people running around doing super laterals, stuff like that, doing the planning for the laterals. So the general admin is just-
It doesn't count towards, no.
So you really only have two programs. One is the lateral program, backflow program, and one is the business assistance ones. So you have two, and the other answer is no, you can't prioritize still.
It's up to them to decide.
Yeah, they'll, they'll tell you, they'll-
All right.
Are you ready?
I think so. Thank you, Jim.
Twenty seventeen dash thirteen, is that correct?
Fifteen.
I move to adopt resolution twenty seventeen dash fifteen, which approves an application to the state community development block grant program for the housing rehabilitation program, laterals and backflow valves, business assistance loans, and general administration in the amount of one hundred and fifty, no, one million five hundred thousand dollars.
There's a second? Any questions about this from the council? All right, we have a question in a second. Does this require a vote call? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Madi?
No, I said no.
Thank you. All right, that was unanimous.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
One less seat required. There's a seat over here, guys.
Before we get to that-
We're there.
Are we there already?
Yeah.
Yeah, can you just ask for a five-minute recess?
So I have to use the restroom, but I'd like to participate in this next discussion, so can we have a brief five-minute recess, please? No questions?
No, Jim.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to resume our meeting. Thank you. If there's anybody out in the hallway, please invite them on back in.
Come on in.
We're going to resume our meeting. We have, we have no old business nights, we're moving on to thirteen A, marijuana ordinances, first reading. Mr. Brady?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Before you, this evening, of the consideration is two ordinances that we've labeled ordinance five five eight A and ordinance five five eight B. This is, if you so choose, would be the first meeting of a two-part meeting for the ordinance going to effect. And before we get really started, I'd like to first recognize the marijuana task force. Back in May of eighteenth of this year, the council, in directions to create this marijuana task force, made up of two members of the council, two members of the planning commission. We had three members of the public and also the standby for the public, and some from law enforcement. This committee has met twelve times since then, and on average, we're sitting here in this room from six thirty to about nine thirty or later, so typically about eight hours is what we call meetings. So in, the ordinance was really focused before you today towards the sale and personal and commercial growth of the marijuana, not what we call cannabis. So I really want to recognize all the members of the committee for the hours that were put in to get to this point, it was a lot of, a lot of hours and a lot of cooperation. And, you know, this is one of those topics that is difficult to make everybody, you know, happy, there's going to be some people happy, some people that won't be happy. But all in all, the votes, the ones that weren't unanimous, I think the people were accepting of the process, so it was good to see the marijuana task force meeting in front of the council, which was very urgent. But we have two ordinances before you today, and I'll start with quickly discussing what the B ordinance is, the five nine eight B, and that ordinance there is essentially de facto banned any kind of cannabis activity whatsoever. And the, this was, talks a lot of the task force as well, where this, because there is some concern about, well, you know, it's capped by the voters, that's not what the voters want, but it's really, it's something that the city, or the committee was looking at as a way to protect local rights. If the city doesn't have something put in place, then the responsibility falls to the state and the city is then silent on the issue. So it's, it's something that was put forth as a means, if there's any kind of issues that we need to go back and work on, that we can't, that the council has questions and wants to come back, that's an option for the council as well. And it's a, it's a one-page ordinance, pretty simple, basically says that, it's just not allowed. But on the ordinance five five eight A, is something that has really been the focus of the committee for many weeks, and in that ordinance, it does allow for the regulation of the sale of cannabis, and there's a commercial aspect of cultivation, both commercial and there's also the cultivation for residential as well. And there is provision in there for what is commonly known as dispensary, but it's now called retail, which is the sale of marijuana, where the committee has looked at allowing three of these retails operations to be within the city. There are separation aspects within this ordinance, where there's a six-hundred-foot separation requirement from schools, daycare, home centers, youth centers, and public park, and one-hundred-foot separation requirement from the lottery, children's park, football field, community building, or parks and recreation area, known as pool. And let's see, outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation is not allowed in historic, downtown district and buffer zone, so that's outdoor, where indoor cultivation is allowed currently. Well, Mr. Kenny's going to get to, so we've talked a little bit this morning as well. And what did not, there was another meeting since, another marijuana task force meeting prior to this meeting, it was just Tuesday, and at that meeting, there was, they were asking to have the council consider some minor changes. One was in paragraph two, under five point zero, five point zero two zero, paragraph two, and it's a small change where it says persons who cultivate cannabis for sole personal use in their residence, and instead of in their residence, it would be at their residence, so that it could pertain to both indoor and outdoor, allowing up to six plants. And Mr. Kenny has input with that as well as a change of-
It's, what you're permitting is, is indoor growth, well, growth at the residence for personal use up to six plants. And what I'm suggesting is that you have six plants per residence, so you don't have six residents, each one includes six plants. And I think that's what you had in mind when you did it.
Right.
Okay. Another change that was recommended- Another, another change that was recommended was change the word dispensary to retailers, which is the term that is being presented now with SB ninety-four. And ninety-four? Sixty-four. Okay. And change the effective date that I have here, the matter of course, we'll have a correct date on the ordinance if it goes forward. And, and to also address areas of the ordinance where only indoor cultivation is cited, and to also allow outdoor. And one of the reasons that came about is the, in this ordinance here, the language of ordinance speed does not allow the group, any kind of cannabis activity at all, unless specifically permitted. That language was added into the back of this ordinance here as ordinance A. So we need to ensure that the outdoor or indoor cultivation is specifically cited as well. And I think, Jim, you have a comment on this?
What, yeah, what I would suggest is that it, I think was assumed when you were doing this, you were banning outdoor growth in historic, in historic district and the buffer zone, but you haven't really specifically permitted indoor growth, growing, cultivation. So what I would suggest, and I think that's what you, that's what's assumed, and I think that's what you intended to do. So what I would suggest, that section five point oh five, point oh six oh, add a new subsection A that would send this decree, indoor commercial cannabis cultivation shall be permitted in all districts with a use permit.
That's really-
Commercial, yeah.
Page twenty-six.
What, what, just so, what you've done is you've addressed outdoor, but you haven't permitted indoor.
So what are you saying?
I would say, add a new subsection A-
Okay.
That would say, indoor commercial cannabis cultivation shall be allowed in all districts with a use permit.
We're not-
Okay.
I think that's what you wanted.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. Basically, you have a statement, if you look at B there, it says outdoor commercial cultivation, and then it says will be allowed. And what you're saying is, we don't have anything saying indoor cultivation will be allowed.
And I think it was just presumed that you should have a statement saying, I would read that one.
Can't we just say outdoor and indoor?
Well, you're saying one, I, I don't know, because I know this would take care of it, I'd have to read the whole thing again. You've addressed outdoor, but you've left out his indoor, but it's definitely in-
Right, that's what I'm saying, because we've used that in other parts of the ordinance, if, instead of just saying outdoor, we say outdoor and indoor commercial cultivation.
No, it's not true.
Yeah, that wouldn't be right.
It, outdoor commercial cannabis is not permitted-
No, it is.
In the historic district and the buffer zone, and you've said that.
I see, I see your point, okay.
Can I just take a second to give a little bit more history on, on things before we get into the specifics? Because we're going to have public comment. So the areas in which the ordinance language needs to be changed, we should make clear any proposed amendments to this before we have public comment.
That's what I think we're doing.
And that's what we're doing. But before we get through all of that, I wanted to just give a little bit more history, because not everybody here knows exactly sort of the process, and really why the committee is making these, this proposal to the council. So if you'll just permit me just a minute or two here. Obviously, this is in response to Prop sixty-four, that was on the ballot statewide last November. I don't recall the percentage of Dunsmere voters that voted, but it was over, over sixty percent, sixty-five percent of Dunsmere voters voted in favor of that. What that did is create recreational, a legal structure for recreational use of marijuana, but it did a lot more than that, too. There's a lot of state regulations. It created a whole new bureaucracy at the state level, an enormous amount of bureaucracy and regulatory purview under different agencies and all that. Anyway, to implement Prop sixty-four, the legislature had to have additional pieces of legislation to actually figure out how we're going to do all this. And so a couple, several pieces of legislation were passed in the months after Prop sixty-four was passed by the voters, in order to kind of clean a bunch of stuff up. Then all that legislation was combined together with the former regulatory framework for medical marijuana, which was called the MRSCA, I believe, with the AUMA, which was Prop sixty-four, to be SB ninety-four. SB ninety-four is essentially the marriage of all of that legislation, and it finally is adopted by the legislature and law. So what did all that do? Well, it created a burden for cities to figure out how they're going to handle it. If, if the city of Dunsmere chose to do nothing, then the regulation would be all at the state level, and we would essentially be open to a legal challenge, should we create a legislation after January first, or create a regulation. And so in order to protect our ability to regulate this industry, this new industry that's been created in California in the future, we need to take some action. we need to take some action, okay? So, so we created the task force and had a bunch of meetings to work through the myriad of issues. There are, in fact, so many pieces to this new industry that we didn't get through all of them. We didn't get through half of them. It's, there's, it's just a lot of work. We, we broke it up into four main categories. Commercial cultivation, dispensaries or retailers, retail sales, manufacturing and testing, and personal use. Obviously, personal use is up to, you know, in terms of cultivation, up to six plants. That's, that's in state law. We can't do anything about that. But we could regulate where it's grown. We could limit it to only indoors. That's within the purview of a city for personal use. The topics that the, that the committee got through in the 12 meetings that we had were commercial cultivation and retail sales. We, we had several meetings where we sort of, we had a few meetings where we sort of spun our wheels a little bit, because it's very difficult to come into those meetings and lead the discussion, because we're not experts on this stuff, and we didn't hire extra consultants and pay a bunch of money for somebody to come tell us what to do. So we really tried to have it be an organic process and took as much input from the public as we possibly could and built a consensus around the topics that we did discuss. But because we didn't discuss yet, and the work, the committee's work is not done after tonight, certainly not. We didn't discuss manufacturing, testing, or, not, distribution. And the reason why distribution is a separate category is because there's different licenses for different activities at the state level. And a distribution license is a whole other business type. So because we didn't get to manufacturing, testing, distribution, we wanted to be able to regulate those activities in the city of Dunsmere in the future, like maybe next month, if we can get through the work. The committee's work is going to continue. And hopefully, within a short amount of time, we will be able to do it. But because the deadline is January 1st, to have something in place, we had to create two ordinances. And one, so one of the ordinances, 558A, is all the work that we did. But we had to specifically put a ban on the activities of the other topics that we didn't get to, so that we reserve the rights to regulate them in the future. So 558, should it get adopted by the city at some point, will be amended in the future, because the council will get more recommendations from the task force on what to do about manufacturing. And we want to have a manufacturing facility in the city. That's like to create oils or edibles or things like that. There's a whole, there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen with that before we say yea or nay. And we want your input on that. Before we have a testing facility, like marijuana in California is going to have to be tested and for its purity level and all of that. We could have a testing facility in the city of Dunsmere if we want one. But we haven't discussed that yet, and we want to be able to regulate that in the future and decide, oh, we want it here and we don't want it there. And if we don't, it sounds counterintuitive, but if we don't ban those activities in this ordinance, now we open ourselves up to liability, and cities try to limit their liability. So that's generally why that exists. I just want to make it really clear, and I apologize for going on so long, but because there is a ban on some activities in both of these ordinances, it doesn't mean it's, in my view, the intention of the city council or the task force to ban those activities outright. It's an extension to give us more time to do the work that needs to be done.
Because this is all time sensitive, we have to do it now.
It's, it's a placeholder, but we can't call it a placeholder ban, because none such thing exists. A ban is a ban until it's unban. But, so that's why it's constructed in that way. To me, it's confusing. You have two ordinances, one bans all activities unless they're permitted. The other has that same language in an ordinance where two major activities are generally permitted. So it's a strategic thing that the, that the task force undertook in order to give us a backup plan. Because 558A, I'll just say, the A ordinance, the one we actually worked on, is if for some reason we can't get through that, then we at least have the first reading of the other one done, so that we could ban all activities in that and give us an extension on everything. My hope is that the work that we've done, that we did, we'll be able to get a consensus on that, because we would like to make this deadline. So I just wanted to make it more clear about why there's these two ordinances. And I hope, I hope that made it clear. Yes, Bruce?
Just a quick question on that. So if we pass A, then the B will never be read and will kind of be discarded, is what you're saying?
Exactly, yeah. A, A is what we worked on and bans the other stuff to give us an extension. B is give us an extension on everything. But we don't need an extension on everything anymore, in my opinion, because we worked through, you know, the cultivation aspects and the retail aspects of it relentlessly. And I am really proud of the task force's efforts. It was, some meetings were contentious, you know, this is a contentious issue, we all understand that. But some of the people in the task force, who I thought wouldn't vote some way, voted some way and vice versa. And people really did, I think, show progress over that, that whole time of coming around to the issue and educating ourselves, we're not experts. So we need people like Mark and like Mr. Kenny, Mr. Brandon, Mr. Kenny, to, to help us. And, and again, I'm proud of the efforts that the task force was able to get done. We have more work to do. Monty has a question.
I don't have a question. I'd like to clarify what Bruce just asked. We, the task force has recommended to the city council, because of time issue, to read both ordinances. The second reading, depending on what happens here, one or the other may not be read. But at least we are at an insurance policy, if you can call it that, that we've read both. And we will have something that we can turn into the state that ensures that the city of Dunsmere has local control over the whole process.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I, do we have, raise your hand if you've been on this task force, if you've had a, I mean, does anybody want to nod? If you guys have had a part, I want to hear you guys, because I know it was a lot of work. I appreciate the work that you guys have done to get us here for this thing, so.
There are several members of the task force in the, in the audience tonight. And I'm sure during public comment, they'll make their voices heard if they choose to do so. But again, I, I prefer, a lot of people did a lot of good work on that task force, and I appreciate the work that they did.
We all.
Bruce had a question?
Yes, sir, I did. So we have the four areas you mentioned, but it seems that there's extra work, I'm sorry. It seems that there's also extra work that has to be done in other areas, other layers, if you will. For instance, permitting, the permitting process, and any zoning issues that might come up. Aren't those things that also would eventually be worked through by the committee?
Thank you very much for pointing that out. Like I said before, when we were sort of spinning our wheels a little bit, it was because we had a stack of information this high of all these other cities that have done all kinds of different things, and some people ban stuff, and some people don't. And we didn't really have a good foundation from which to start the conversation. So because Mr. Kenny drafted an ordinance similar to the one we were generally looking at in the city of Shasta Lake, we said, let's look at this ordinance and just go line by line and figure out, is this relevant to us? And if it is, you know, and we want to move in this direction. And we, and we sort of did it like a council meeting, although task force is an advisory body to this one. We, we had motions and votes, and we built a consensus that way. Because we structured it, and we're going to structure it, in the way that Shasta Lake did, by having a regulatory ordinance and then a zoning ordinance that backs that up. So because, for various reasons, I should say, some of the, you can do this, you can't do that, language is in here, or that language is in, is in here. The, the where you can do stuff is sort of also alluded to in here, at least indoor/outdoor, that kind of thing, historic district. There's some of that language in here. But the zoning ordinance that is currently being developed by the task force is going to clarify all of that. And that will come before the council, too. The reason why we're doing the regulatory one first is so that we can send it to the state, and the state will say, oh, they, they regulated it. So now, should someone, sort of an entrepreneur in the city of Dunsmere, want to have a business that is permitted, they could actually go to the state and get their license after doing our application and making sure they're complying with everything and paying our permitting fees and our regulatory fees. That's why, it's, the time crunch, it has to do with the regulation piece. The zoning can come after that. The, the specifics are on the application process. This is what our meeting on Tuesday night, we went sort of round and round about application, looking at different applications and what's relevant to us. There's, there's a lot more work to be done there, so we wanted to get this piece through so that the time piece of it is not prohibited for people.
And the whole, also the financial end, if you have a, you got either, right? How much are you going to charge for things, how the revenue would be?
Yeah, we did get advice from Mr. Kenny specifically, that the council, we should put in the ordinance that the council should set fees by resolutions, so that they can be changed by resolution without requiring a change to the ordinance, so that's, I think, sound policy. Anyhow, I'm sure people will have questions about the specifics of the ordinance, and myself or Monty or any member of the task force can help answer those questions when we have public comment, which I hope we will do in just one moment. There are a couple of specific changes that Mark made. I want to make sure everyone's clear on those. Most of them are a simple, like we need to change the term dispensaries to retailers, just because that's the language the state's using now. So we shouldn't have motions and votes on that necessarily before public comment, but I want to make sure that everyone understands the intention to just change those language pieces. There's a couple more things that I also.
Says Lake Shasta Lake there somewhere, too.
Exactly, so that's the other one. Let's get rid of that one right now. So on page, on physical page four, five, six.
They're numbered at the bottom.
At the bottom.
Oh, I'm sorry. So under the section of.
They're numbered at the bottom.
In my version, they're not, I'm sorry. Under the section on fees, which is 55180, there is a reference to the Shasta Lake municipal code. So obviously, we need to change that to the Dunsmere municipal code. Again, that's just a type of change.
Where are you, uh?
Page 33.
Page 33. There you go, Josh.
Oh, I can do it this way, too.
There it is.
So we'll want to make that change, that's, that's a simple one. Couple more here.
No, I don't, I don't see it.
Okay, it's page 33.
Page here.
Paragraph B, the very bottom.
Paragraph B, under the section on fees, near the bottom of the page. It just changes it from Shasta Lake to Dunsmere. So that one is relatively simple. Obviously, Mark already talked about the section on, under the scope of the article, changing the word "in" to the word "at."
We already did that, yeah.
We need to figure out the other part of that, Mr. Kenny's recommendation about to include per residence, so that it's, I mean, in my opinion, that's already in the state law, but this would be a reification of that, and I think that's appropriate, if I'm fine with that. So that it's not per resident, but per residence. Yeah, well, of course, yeah.
I got it, it says persons who cultivate cannabis at their sole personal use at their residence.
And that explains per residence.
Right, so let's, let's just remember, the intent of this section is so that we're not saying, because some, some cities, they, even for personal use, for personal cultivation, you have to come to the city and get a permit. You have to go through an application process, pay a fee, all this kind of stuff. Kind of so maybe that you're already in the system, maybe? We're saying that that's not necessary, that's overregulation. And so persons who cultivate cannabis, cannabis for their sole personal use at their residence, up to six plants.
So I can't grow your plants at my house?
That's correct.
That's.
No, you can't.
No, no, you can't. That's what I'm saying.
Well, we talked, we talked about this on.
We talked about this extensively.
We talked about this on Tuesday night. I had, I had a similar thing. But essentially, if there are less than six plants being grown on a parcel, the city is going to assume that's for the resident of that place or, or permission from that resident. You know, if you want to, if you say that you own the plants, but you're growing on someone else, as long as there's not more than six, the city's not going to get involved, essentially. Just the point of that sentence is may do so without submitting a permit, that's, that's the.
But here's where, per recommendation from.
Yes.
Is Mr. Kenny is suggesting that up to six plants and we add per residence. So that's a change or this.
So I have a question about that, because I think it makes sense to me. If I have two residences in the city, I can grow six plants on both, on each one?
Yeah, sure.
I don't, I don't know that Prop 64 allows for that, but if it does, okay.
I think the other would be more problematic. I mean, you think about it, you have two patients that, or two people that both want to grow plants in a resident. I can understand wanting to limit that, but at the same time, it's based on usually the person, right?
No, it's based on residence.
It's based on the person.
Okay, okay, I follow that.
Whatever you want.
No, it's state law.
Well, but that, the six plants is state law.
It's state law.
Per residence or per person?
No, per residence.
So per, per residence language is in state law. But I'm fine with adding it here, up to six plants per residence.
Fine.
Okay. That looks good. There's just one more that I want to bring up, which is, well, Mr. Kenny brought up the, we talked about this, too, about having operative language in the ordinance rather than just language that bans some activity. So to that point, I think Mr. Kenny is right, we should add under 505.060.
It's page 26.
Page 26, the statement that he wrote earlier. We're all in agreement on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know the language that.
Can we run that? It was indoor commercial cannabis cultivation shall be allowed in all districts.
With a use permit.
With a use permit. And that's part of those.
It's B without, with a minor change now.
No, no, it's a new sentence.
You have out, you addressed outdoor, you never addressed indoor. It's F.
Well, he's.
Whatever you want to put.
I think, I think the, the suggestion was to make it A and then reletter those appropriately.
Okay.
It's the same statement at the top.
Okay, got you, so A, B, and so on and so on. Okay, cool, that's going to be better.
Finally, I'm sorry, one more assumption.
Do the language, you wrote it?
Yeah. Can we run that indoor language again? Indoor commercial cannabis cultivation shall be allowed in all districts with a use permit. Now, does that include?
With a, not with a use permit.
The historic district, too? Yes.
Okay. Okay.
The only thing to have to do, this is sort of where we started with the committee, was to, you know, in the interest of preserving the aesthetic of the historic district for tourists and residents alike, we wanted to limit outdoor commercial cultivation. Now, we should keep in mind that in state law, in Prop 64, you are not allowed to buy your operations of any cannabis business, have it be seen from the public right of way or smelled from the public right of way. So if there were outdoor growing in areas that are seen from the public right of way, that would not be compliant with state law. So by having an actual regulatory framework, we can enforce that. So that's, that's important, I think. Okay, one other thing. That's right, that's right. One other thing I wanted to add is, I know that members of the public might have other things, too, but in the Dunsmere municipal code, there is Title 17, which is use permits and variances. And it's basically a vanilla ordinance that was adopted a long time ago, probably when the code was adopted overall, that allows for generic variance to any aspect of zoning. It's under the, Title 17 is the zoning area. I think it's important, so in the rest of the municipal code, and all the other titles, not all of them, but most of them, there's specific variance language that either does one of two things. It sets forth the terms by which the planning commission should evaluate an application for a variance. Or it says, variances for anything in this title, which would be the marijuana title, shall be governed by the vanilla variance one. I think minimally, we should put that in here as well. It's, it's really simple language. It's in, it's already in our code and other titles. So this is what I would propose, is to add after 505. this is what I would propose, is to add, after 505-190, to add a section 505-200 called "variances", and just, it's one sentence. "Variances to this chapter shall be processed per section 17.20.050 of this code." That allows operative language in this ordinance that allows someone to apply for a variance should they want one. Does that make sense?
Yeah. What was your number again?
No, let me do some...
Okay, let me just, it's 17.20.050.
Slowly, you have it memorized and you have it written, I have to write it down.
Seventeen dot two zero dot zero five zero. Title seventeen is the zoning title of our municipal code, and that section is the section that governs variances. They're basic in nature, they just say, there's basic terms if you wanna apply for variance for the planning commission, that kind of thing. Also, I wanna bring this up since we had Mr. Kenny here, is that appropriate to add that to this title, or to this chapter?
It doesn't hurt, let me tell you, though, in reality, variances is very, if they're properly done, they're very extrinsically granted, and probably wouldn't ever apply to these uses, but it doesn't hurt to have it in.
Okay.
I have an objection.
Okay.
I would like for you to repeat, because you haven't repeated it yet.
The sentence?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would like to add...
Exactly where you wanna add it and what it reads.
Yep, I'd like to add section five zero, five dot zero five dot two zero zero, and the title of that section would be "variances", and it would be a one-sentence section that reads, "Variances to this chapter shall be processed..."
Slowly.
"Variances to this chapter shall be processed..."
I've not done it yet.
Sorry.
Shall be processed?
Yes, "per section", and then there's the number, seventeen dot two zero dot zero five zero of this code.
Of this, okay, it actually should read at the Dunsmere Municipal Code.
It'll be in the Dunsmere Municipal Code, so it references...
Which is self-referencing, that's what it's...
Right, but you are citing "processed by section seventeen two hundred and five of the Dunsmere Municipal Code."
Yeah, this, this language is literally copied and pasted from the other chapters that reference it, so that's how it's referenced throughout the municipal code, but to say "of the DNC" is fine, too.
Right, but this is the first time it even comes up in this order, and so, there's no way to know what is referencing.
Right, and, right, the distinction there is that, should the ordinance be adopted, it'll be part of the Dunsmere Municipal Code, so that this ordinance is in the code, so it says "this code", it means the Dunsmere Municipal Code, I'm fine with changing it to the Dunsmere Municipal Code, if that is more...
I think I would rather have it in there, I think it's a bit clearer what's referencing.
Okay, so, as a minute. All right, thank you for considering that, there's one last, if anything, I think that Mark already talked about it, at the end, the effective date needs to be changed to December from the one small detail.
Yes, sir. You have section two, section three, and the second, second, section three.
Oh, yeah, that'd be it, four. Yes, sir.
Okay. Last page, thirty-four, last...
Since we added the prohibition section, which is that piece I talked about earlier, how we need to...
And section, section four, effective date should be section four.
Good catch, there was just spur of luck.
Okay, so, again, I apologize for the history and all that, but if there are any other questions about what we're considering, I wanna open it up to a public comment. Mark?
I would just like to finish by saying, I put in the staff report that there was no cost for this, but there actually is a kind of an underlying cost, and there's been hours spent for our attorneys on salaries, so like, it's not a difficult cost for me, but there is a long process, there's gonna be costs in getting this put through, but the intent was, I didn't know how to quantify it at this time, we're still working on it, and we're looking to pass those costs on into the application team as well. But there, while I said there's no cost, there...
So, where is this going back?
Well, it's not a direct impact, it's, you know, paying our city attorney, their money is in the budget, I expect it to be enough, if not, we'll have to adjust, mid-year we'll take a look, see if we're projecting to have enough. And we're looking at recap for what it costs.
Right, all of the, all of those costs in the first year of the permits that might be issued are recovered.
We recoup, Josh.
One other thing I just wanna say, very briefly, before we have public comment, is, a lot of people might be interested in the issue of taxation, we have not, we're not considering taxation in either of these ordinances. Tax measures have to be put before the voters, at least sales tax measures. There, the state is gonna collect its fifteen percent on cultivation, and the distribution channel is what is gonna collect the state taxes. Eventually, if there are, in fact, dispensaries or cultivation, or manufacturing, or testing in the city, all of those things will have tax implications for the city, should be put to the voters. That wouldn't happen until the earliest November of 2018. So, again, we're trying to get through the regulations now, taxation will come at a later time. I thought there might be some questions about that, so. Okay, public comment? Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Weston Wild, sixty-two hundred Eleanor Street. I'm here to ask the council to consider amending a particular sentence that's in this ordinance. I attended all the task force meetings, and at one point, they decided, the task force talked about protecting children, and they wanted to have some prescription or buffers around the children's park and the library and some of the city parks. So, some of the language that they worked out was a hundred-foot, a hundred-foot restriction from children's park and the library, those are the ones I'm gonna talk about tonight. And the night that they adopted it, I had to leave early, I didn't get home or ride home, so, I was surprised to find later that the language of the restriction said that a hundred-foot zone would be, would apply to the library, and it would not just be like the entrance of the library, protecting children that would go in and out of the library, like, they wouldn't have to pass by the entrance of a dispensary or a testing facility, but the way it was written was that it says, "a hundred feet from the entire parcel of the library." The library backs up against my dispensary, which is on Sacramento Avenue, so the parcels touch at their corners, the very back of the library's parcel touches the very back of the parcel of my dispensary. So, that language that's in the ordinance now precludes me from having a dispensary at the shop where I've had a dispensary since 2009, so I think we're at our eight-year anniversary, and that's devastating to me, that's my livelihood, whether I wanted to have a dispensary or I was actually entertaining and having a nursery and selling plants in the spring, but I wanna know if the council will consider amending the sentence to say, instead of one hundred feet zone from the entire parcel of the library, to one hundred feet from the entrance of the library, so that would disallow any dispensaries adjacent to the library, the children's parks protecting kids or sensitive citizens from having to see it as they enter the library, but it wouldn't remove a business that's on a whole different street down below. I'm a little cynical. I think that some of the people that want, look at this particular language, do not necessarily just want to protect children from entering the library, that they are happy that that language precludes me from having a business, that there might be some animosity, and US legislators have to overlook some of the animosities. I've had, you know, animosities with people, but when you legislate, you have to say that's, I don't care about the personal pain I have against them, this is about regulation and legislation.
Can you wrap up with a nice minute or so?
That's it, I'm all wrapped up.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
No.
Cricket's green leaves. I've never seen you move that fast. Back in, I might go read this, looking at for others. Thank you, everybody, for your service, everybody on the committee, thank you, and the public, thank you. Legislative analysts' office estimate the state to save tens of millions of dollars each year in criminal costs now that marijuana is legal. So, please don't be too hard on people who legally want to grow a bit of their own preuse. You're supposed to be controlling criminal activities, not to be creating regulations that force people to be criminals. Illegal pot growing is far different than activities you're attempting to control through these regulations. With the lack of any industry in our town, we really need any revenue that we can bring to town. Sessions has spooked liberal mayors with his promise to push hard against sanctuary cities, forcing cities such as New York City to outline how they are not in compliance with federal immigration law, or else lose much-funded, needed-funded federal funding. The state of California, according to government round, is a sanctuary state. That being said, the state couldn't lose out on any federal funding we need, and federal funding is what runs this city. California's fastest-growing industry is about to open up, our worries in this city are economy, crime, and education. An estimated one to six billion dollars in new tax revenue is possible, and that will be directed for specific new or expanded programs such as drug use prevention and treatment, and helping address youth and law enforcement, and environmental cleanup, and research. Only California cities that permit recreational marijuana will be eligible for these grants from the billion-dollar coffers of Prop 64. A ban would end opportunities for local government schools, folks, safety agencies, and nonprofits in cities that don't welcome cannabis industry to get paid for the hundreds of millions a year in grants that fund substantial abuse programs and offset enforcement costs, and more. The Drug Policy Alliance, ACW, have teamed to file a legal challenge against the city of Fontana over restrictive personal cultivation ordinances. Those who register rights, at the very least, the lawsuit should cause other localities to think twice about erroneous meddling in personal cultivation. State law allows six plants on a parcel of recreational gardens, but local ordinances can drive those gardens indoors and put other regional regulations on them. For medical cannabis, the state will allow us as one hundred square feet of plant cannabis for a patient, and caregivers can grow up to five hundred square feet.
Hey, you have about three minutes, so could you add up to ten a minute or so?
Yeah, one minute. Uh, let's see, some cities, counties, province, state have moved to establish zoning regulations for medical cannabis cultivation, in many cases, these are driven by complaints from neighbors who don't like the sight or smell of marijuana, or by public officials with very protective attitudes. Public safety concerns have been raised, and there have been a few incidents of violence around marijuana gardens while there may be a need. Some cities have proud greenhouses or other security measures for gardens, and rural areas and in whole counties there have, there's no justification for outlawing outdoor marijuana gardens. Any patient who is impacted by plant or existing local ordinances can write to CalMoral. Thanks.
Hi, everybody, my name is Gina, I live in Mount Shasta, I operate the Greenheart Collective, it's a cannabis shop, we've been operating over seven years now. I just came down, I was asked to go over here to ordinance and to look, and I just have suggestions. As a shop operator, I think let me shake your grandfather in. I think the hundred-foot around the pools, the libraries, or in the sensitive areas, I do think that needs to be increased. Our summer hours, the summer, that's our busiest season, and we do get a lot of traffic. And so, I think a hundred-foot from a cannabis shop, from view, from the, from the parks or from the pools, I know there's a big pool over here with a hamburger stand, and there's a building and stuff over there, but from a business owner and from the busy time, I just think the setbacks need to be more, five, six, even a thousand. I know in areas it's hard, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little nervous, I don't wanna speak it. It's hard in sensitive areas, the setbacks, and especially our small towns and stuff, that there might not be certain areas that will, might accommodate a cannabis shop. Also, Mount Shasta has incorporated, or are allowed us to grow our personal cannabis outdoors at a small fee, and I suggest putting a small fee on your outdoor with six plants, that would help cause inspections, you know, that there's any complaints, it would help have, having to hire somebody to go out and just to look. I mean, just to go in to get a permit to grow my six plants, it's just a small fee and to have somebody, you know, pay to have to go out and make sure that you're properly to own anybody's property. Also, I'm on over the permit fees, we've been going through some permit fees in Wee, California, and I find their process a little ridiculous. Myself, I found that your process, the ten days and that, I've had my application in for sixty days now, it's kind of becoming a joke with the city of Wee, and it's a little frustrating now, people are bringing in lawyers and everything, and I just wanna say, it's awesome that Dunsmere is considering cannabis, and setting back on the cultivation and the distribution and the manufacturing. The taxes are quite funny on how this is all gonna work, all the rules and stuff have just come out today, and I'm having them print out at my shop. Sorry, I'm really nervous, I'm not here speaking and stuff. So, I think that, I'm still frustrated on how it's all gonna work, because they want me to pay fifty percent to the distributors, and I'm like, well, my distributor's gonna be, it's all funny how it's all gonna work and stuff, but I think setting the setbacks is important, putting in a small permit fee on the local residents to grow their six plants on their back, and I think the permitting process and having it shortened to the ten days and the appeal process and things like that, and then, because they took in six applicants, and so, now the three to the four applicants, they weren't qualified, they didn't have this, they didn't have that, but yet, I'm the fifth applicant, I'm pretty much everything, and yet, it's been sixty days, now I have to wait for all of their appeals, and mind you, a ten thousand dollar permit fee upfront, and mind you, I'm a nonprofit, so now I have ten thousand dollars that's sitting in the city of Wee that I could be working with and doing things with.
It's been about three minutes, so...
I know, okay, well, anyway, just wanna come here and say thank you, and that's my suggestions.
Thank you.
Welcome to Dunsmere, Gina. I left forty seconds off mine.
Oh, hold on, before you come back around, we're gonna give the opportunity to everybody else, but you can come back around.
I left out my forty seconds.
I really think, council, that we need the ordinance, I want local control. I'm a big believer in zoning commission, I think the zoning commission is just supporting the future of the city as council is, and so, I'm actually very happy with the decision you guys are working on right now. The city manager's time is never free, he is a Saudi employee, but every portion of every moment he works for the city is either alive in a water sewer and is being used up on marijuana, and there are costs, we're gonna have to publish all of these ordinances. One thing, Bryce, I know you were trying to be very clear, but I can't be sure that everybody got it. When you pass this ban, it's with the assumption you will be passing laws for the marijuana use in Dunsmere in the future on these issues. I think that's what you meant, right?
I hope that's what I said.
Okay, well, that's, that's critical, it's not, we're banning it, it is that, we're not ready to create law, we're not, the state's not even ready to prosecute law on these If you guys pass this ordinance, it will allow, first of the year, people to be growing marijuana, marijuana in Dunsmere, in their own yards. That's a concession you made to the people, you feel that's what the people want, I think it's reasonable to give it to them, I'm glad you do it, so I hope the ordinance does go through. Laws can be changed, and these laws may have to be changed as we go along, so, it's not like anything's gonna happen zoning. I love the zoning because it addresses concerns, I used it issue actually with Mrs. Christie's car lot, when she waited in front of them, zoning had a lot of questions, she actually offered a lot of conversation about what they're gonna do, what time of day they're gonna do, and what ends up happening there is you get some understanding and commitment out of the people that are gonna be doing this business. I have no problem with where the dispensary is or that dispensary exists, but I don't believe you create law for one person, but if you guys start doing it, me and Babe, they would like not have contracting laws. in the city of Dunsmere. I do think that it should be approached, approach at zoning. I think reasonable people will come up with reasonable decisions. There may be a discussion of advance, there may be discussion of other issues, and whatever happens is worked out by zoning. I feel very comfortable with that. So, I feel comfortable with the ordinances as you guys talked about so far, an agenda, and I hope if you make any very serious changes, that you'll allow us to redress anything that would be a serious amendment to it.
So just to confirm, this is not the line for public comment, this is just standing room? Okay.
I'm Don Del, forty-one, forty-nine Crossway. I was on the task force with marijuana thing.
You still are.
So, I'm still on. I haven't said I was willing to press. There was a wide spectrum of people, but you had people with just every opinion you could think of, people like myself, I was on one extreme of it. But I'm totally satisfied with the ordinance. I think we did a really good job, and I urge you to pass it. One of, one of the things I went into when I was during the discussion was a misunderstanding of the separation. People didn't understand what the separation was for, and they all had the feeling, I think they thought it was this arbitrary, this arbitrary number that people pick out at a house somewhere. There's a real reason for the separation, and it has to do with public consumption. Problem that went into another city. People, not everybody, people go into a dispensary, they buy a small quantity of marijuana, they take twenty steps out of the dispensary and they light it on. And that's, that's been a real problem for local merchants that are located right close to the dispensary itself. And so, you don't want that kind of activity around the puppet park, a library. That's the reason for the separation, and so you need really not cut that cut the separation. I hope you're not tempted to cut that cut the separation because I think it's really important. Also, I'd like to say there was never any discussion about Miss Wild, whoever's hit this, you know, there was no conspiracy against Miss Wild. No, there's never been a conspiracy. I just want you to come here and sit down a little bit.
Thank you.
My name's Paul Martin. I was also at Mostly, Paul Lee, exactly. But I'd like to say Leslie's shop is way down facing by the train station. The library is on Dunsmere Avenue, facing this way. You can't see each other. When you go up that way, you're on Dunsmere Avenue, you're in town, you've got to go up, down the hill, down that way. And every time I go by her place, I don't see anybody there, maybe one or two people during the day, but I would think she should be grandfathered in.
Thank you.
My name is David. I currently run the Shasta Cannabis Company Collective in Shasta, Oklahoma. I'm.
Are you talking to the microphone?
Oh, I'm trying to say.
You're talking, you're far away.
I'm here tonight to address the House of Glass, actually. Been speaking with possible new owners currently in, or in, being purchased, and I've approached the new owner in regards to subdividing the property, making the restaurant and the north, I mean, south wing commercial, and he's interested in making north wing sixteen low-income housing. And I would like to be able to put a retail store on the commercial side and an indoor world in the home alley at the restaurant, and possibly a bit later on if it was allowed. It has a commercial kitchen for animals. It would make a great place. I don't know, it's more than, I believe, sixteen hundred feet from the school that's down the area. Currently here to see what the council, I went to the meeting, I've listened to their views and how they feel in regards to these things similar to that. Of course, they can't speak to the council and new ones, so pretty much that's it. Certainly, that's something that can be taken into consideration.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gina, and I'm extremely nervous and I have a really hard time talking, so.
Please just put this down slightly, so.
So please bear with me while I start with my words. First of all, in two thousand nine, Leslie opened her shop. She followed every single rule, every single ordinance, every single obstacle you put in front of her. She's a rule follower. She'll continue to follow rules. And the second thing I want to say is that I did come to some of the task force meetings, and you're right, there was a lot of activity, and I was impressed with how many people were able to just open, widen their, their sphere of observation and sometimes change their minds. And I really do believe that the language in the ordinance as it stands, it would eliminate Leslie's business, and I understand that that's probably not intentional. I would hope that that's not intentional, but that is what's happening if you put the ordinance as it's ordered, the way it is now. And I want to say that the people on the task force committee who, who found out late, who were approached later and said, hey, what are you doing with the ordinance? They were shocked and concerned. It's like, that wasn't our intention. We don't want to close down your, your shop. That was, that's not our intention. So I'm hoping that you're honest and true in that, in that claim, that, I'm hoping that you change the language. And there, I don't believe there's any conspiracy. I don't believe that there's any Leslie. I don't believe that. But what I believe is that there, there is just, there may be some animosity, but I just want to tell you that Leslie will always follow the rules. And to this day, still, still to this day, nobody on the task force can explain to me what is the risk to the children by having the hundred-foot rule as it stands right now. If they're walking into the library, they're nowhere near Leslie's shop. And I've never, ever, ever seen or heard anybody lighten up a joint out in front. That just, that just doesn't happen. That just doesn't happen. She's been here for her since two thousand nine, and there have been absolutely no arrests or any kind of addition, crime, or anything like that. So, I can assure you those, those years were encountered. So, thank you for your time, and I hope that you take all that into consideration.
Thank you. Sounds like we might have a couple more public comments, so before we circle back around, let's let everyone have an opportunity. You don't have to come stand in line, but maybe stay over a comment before Don jumps back in.
Yeah, I am tired. I go to Leslie's shop fairly often, not to buy anything, but because I take treats to her dog. And I've never seen anybody light up a vice, a vice, have their bag, and they lock the door, and they get in their car and drive away. And I told Karen about, about what's happening in Karen's library, and we went out tonight and looked over the hill. We had walked across the parking lot, there are two fences, and it's really steep. If you try to go from the library down to Leslie's dispensary, you'd probably break at least your leg because it's very steep. So, it, it seems to me that it shouldn't be a problem for Leslie or vice acting in the city.
Thank you.
Number of law firm, sixty-two, twenty-five, Hill Street, Mossers. This is owner of downtown in the historic district, and I've got a few points here I want to clarify at some point. Earlier, I heard six hundred feet from schools, daycare, and parks. Is that, are we now talking a hundred feet?
There's a hundred feet from library and from children's park, the pool.
And the pool.
And the pool. But six hundred applies to daycares and schools.
Six hundred only applies to schools.
Schools, yeah. Okay. There are other places where children congregate, like pizza parlors, arcades in the pizza parlor, drinking fountain, just shopping downtown. So there are a lot of other areas where children congregate, so that's just a personal comment. Also, need a clarification on parcel versus residence. You can have an apartment building on a parcel where there's a number of residents, so we need to clarify, I don't believe, unfortunately, I'm at the disadvantage of not having a written copy of the ordinance, so I don't know the exact wording, but I don't believe parcel was used, but residence is what we were discussing tonight, so that should be clarified and not be misused. And also, the historic district, I'm not sure exactly the boundaries, and we talk about a buffer zone, so I'm not sure what a buffer zone is defined as.
If this includes the shop.
Well, it's, I'm a civil engineer by profession, so I like to see things on maps and, you know, center streets and the rightways and things like that. So regarding the indoor allowing in the, in all districts, is there going to be something like a limitation? The concern here, and we discussed it at our business meeting, downtown business meeting a couple weeks ago, is that you can have a whole bunch of storefronts being vacant because there's indoor clothes going on, and so what, how are we going to be able to control that in the historic district, shopping district? And currently, there are smells coming out from some of these areas, and so how are we going to regulate the smell factor? Even though people aren't lighting up in front of dispensaries or whatever, people shopping downtown or have phones will be experiencing this. I had a personal experience in Ashland not too long ago. Awful smells from everywhere you could walk, and I don't know if it's different in Oregon or what's going on, but it's very, as you're walking around downtown doing shopping, to have that kind of environment to shop in. So there would be some question on how we're going to regulate that and how we'll be able to address the concerns or complaints in that particular. And I believe that's all I have for my people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jerry Totten. I live at forty-six oh eight Deer Haven Lane, and I just need a clarification that you had said six plants per household. Does that supersede the six plants per medical marijuana patient if there's two people in the household? And each are allowed six plants per person for their medication? That's all I have to ask, and we can answer questions after public comment, so thank you.
Sarah Prime, or two oh two Dunsmere Avenue. Two points I want to bring up. In this area, there haven't been any people standing out in the street smoking marijuana. So to worry about Leslie's dispensaries in a place that would somehow influence children at the libraries are posturous. She's been there this long, and nobody's been doing anything like that, or any of the other dispensaries up there in that sector that I know of. And number two, and it's what that man was just asking about, the way I understand this, two fifteen isn't changed at all, and that these laws do not apply to medical patients, that there, since four twenty was overruled, four twenty was the one that set six plants and eight ounces of marijuana allowed per patient, and a man got caught with extra pot and went to court, and the judge decided that no legislation can limit the amount of plants or the amount of processed marijuana a patient has. All right, no legislation, and that the two fifteen law has not been changed by any of this recreational stuff. That's just to include people who wanted to smoke recreationally. And I just wanted to bring that up. I'm under the understanding that two fifteen is not changed at all, and who regulates that is the patient's doctor on the amounts of plants per parcel and per residence and how many people. And if you guys know any law that changed that, I sure would like to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diverbards, I really don't very happy. As one of the few diverbards that attended most of the meetings, I was a little late to come, but I admitted to most of them. I don't believe that it was ever the intent of the committee or the task force to prohibit the existing business from existing, and so if that was an oversight in the writing of the ordinance, I hope that you guys can fix that tonight because I don't think that anybody on the commission wanted that. And if that's what's going to happen, I think you guys can fix that. That's all.
Thank you.
Forty seconds. Now, we're at the end. Now you may forget. No, Leslie is a good person. I mean, she's here, she gives out to the poor, and she gives to the elderly for free, and there ain't nobody in town that's going to do that in the future. I think she should stay. When we did the separation thing, I was thinking of the front door of the library. I wasn't thinking of the back of the lot against where we voted on that. Thanks. Milk, Doc?
Thank you.
He got his last say, I'll give him one again.
That's not, no, that's not okay.
Oh, is that okay?
No, no, as long as everyone has had a chance to make a public comment.
You can go again.
You can go again.
Go again.
I wouldn't want to be seen as limiting public comment.
We keep hearing that there's copious amounts of money to be made. I honestly think cops are doing business, what a reasonable business expectations have to be considered. By the sheer fact that one of three licenses automatically goes to Leslie because she is a dispensary, she has something of value and consequence in the city of Dunsmere. We're not putting her out of business, but she may have to pony up to doing some business. She may have to go in front of planning commission to get the building accepted. They may have some requirements. It's not a big deal. It's part of doing business, and there is the opportunity for her to make the copious quantities of money. Business is just business. There's a lot of things that happen to you and me, Dave, they're business. We just pay, and it's part of business. I don't think anyone's trying to put anyone out. Yeah, there may be a couple hurdles to jump. You always got hurdles in business. It's not personal, it's just business.
Before you think that's. I want to compliment your thought, that was really good. You've probably wanted to say. This thing's about, we're supposed to write the laws to protect what we want. If we are trying to protect the children from being exposed to people coming in and out of a marijuana shop, it doesn't make any sense to write a law backwards, which is what we're doing. We're saying, here's the library, here's the marijuana shop, and when the kids that go in and get in out of the library are going to be at risk. That's ridiculous. Those kids never walk around a block. They walk as little as possible. So we have to write it to fit the circumstance, not a fragment, and that's what we're doing if we're talking about, well, the two property lines meet. You heard what you'd have to do to get from the library to the shop. I mean, I don't imply it, maybe it would, I don't know, but it doesn't make any sense. So why don't we just be sensible and correct that little glitch? After twelve weeks, we shouldn't have that, two pieces of property that people don't vote for one or the other. They all go buy one because they're going by the other. That's all I have to say. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, Rosa. Hi, Julie. I have a question. In what Roberta brought up about, you know, kids being near the pizza parlor and things like that, I'm wondering, what's the difference between a retail shop and a bar? And there's lots of bars, there's lots of my bars, it's a story. Yeah, well, to me, you can't stand outside a bar and drink. Can you stand outside the dispensary and smoke? Can you smoke anywhere in Dunce here? So it's the same here. So it's kind of, okay, because that was a concern. I thought, well, what, you know? I don't want people sitting in front of my restaurant on those benches, both in pride. But I wouldn't want them sitting out there drinking beer either. So to me, it's the same thing, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Pryne back again. Regarding Leslie's shop, there hasn't been any problems there. And if this has written so that her property testing the back end of the library puts her out of business, I would consider it somebody trying to do a vendetta and put her out of business and run her out of town. Okay? And I'm pretty sure a lot of people would too. There's no reason for it, there's never been a problem with it, even though it was predicted that when she opened her shop, that all these bad things were going to happen. And as far as what the last lady was saying about bars and dispensaries, how are you going to justify the fact that the brewery's right across the street from the library and people sit outside drinking in front of kids if people can't walk in Leslie's shop and buy something and take it home? I want to say that into you.
Thank you. All right, are there any other public comments?
Can I say one more thing? It's just about kids. They have a better chance of getting in trouble on the video store or Chevron station than around the front of the marijuana place. Because they can go in there and they can steal beer out of the refrigerators. And they do it. I see them around town talking that they've just stole beer from the video or just stole beer from, you know, the gas station. So that's the place to keep your kids, keep an eye on them. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, we're going to close the podium for public comment at this time?
Was he here?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to lead off by saying that I agree that the ordinance of the merits of the library should be related to entrance and not physical property lines.
And I want Adam to that. I don't think there's a single person on here that is trying to target Leslie. And I think we'd all have a favor of keeping her in the shop too. That's not my intention, I just hope that we don't go that route.
I don't got a problem with either, but is it legislative?
Look, I don't think, and I didn't go all this meeting. Always my understanding that no one wants to fool them out with the existing dispensary or whatever you call it, retail. And nothing's written that way. What you can do is you can delete library or just say, with the exception of a retail facility that existed at the time of the enactment of this ordinance, these rules apply.
That language is actually already in the ordinance. But... Oh, oh, yeah, it's under the... Oh, sorry, I marked it in my other copy.
It's addressed someplace, but I don't think that clearly.
I agree, that's why I was going to ask for your clarification on it, if you had any opinion on it. Because, just so that everyone knows, there is a... Can we just find that, can you guys help me find that?
I can't find it here. But basically, recognizance of so many...
It's at the bottom of one of these pages.
It's at the bottom of 5.055050. Dispensary already operating with the city's permission and the city of Dunce are deemed permitted to dispense cannabis and cannabis products.
Well, that's one of the... Well, right, so it's the second part of that. Provided that they pay all regulatory fees and taxes and all other requirements and standards. So that's my question, is if...
What I would do, what I would do is simply, in the second, either delete library, you don't want to delete library, the word library, add at the beginning of me, with the exception of retail facilities operating in the city at the time of the enactment of this ordinance, then you want no cannabis dispensers in that. So you just accept it, simply. The one, it's an odd note, it's been there, it's never been a problem. I would suggest that.
The simplest way would just make the library out there.
The library is...
I think the library is important to have too.
Because we can have a shop pop up right next to it.
No, I would suggest to just start with the exception, with the exception of retail facilities operating at the time of the enactment of this ordinance. Then you want...
I have no objection to that.
I need to write it down.
Do you want to ask a question? Because I think that lady accepts from that. He wants to make sure that that wouldn't exempt that business or any business operating in the city from the other provisions of the ordinance.
No, it's just a setback requirement. Well, I think it's pretty skinny to start with, but anyway, that's what it is. It would just relate to that.
I didn't catch the whole sentence, could you just give us a little overtime?
With the exception...
Yes.
...of retail facilities...
Slowly.
At the time?
At the time of the enactment of this ordinance. Then you carry on.
Can I read a question?
Yes.
With the exception of retail facilities operating at the enactment of this ordinance.
At the time.
And just to be clear, that sentence should be added to the end of Section B?
No, it could be a beginning of Section B, it's a clause. Then you put a comment, and then you carry, I mean, a comment. Then you carry on with no cannabis dispensary.
That makes sense.
Okay, thank you. You sort of already agreed to the other amendments to the ordinance at this point. Is everyone in agreement that we should add that language?
Okay, you can't be just, you know, okay?
We did vote, yeah, I'm sorry.
They were pretty minor.
Okay.
You know, what is keeping a date that is incorrect? Because a lot of people have worked on this. I want, however this gets enacted, I would like to have it on record, you know, that this is how we voted.
Okay.
And not just...
We're going to have to vote on this, I might want to be able to say.
No, because we're going to have to have a reading and then...
Yeah.
Right. But even adding this...
Thank you, let's have a vote on it.
It's a simple little thing of taking a vote.
You're voting on the amendment.
You're voting on adding this.
Okay, so here, I'll make a motion. I move that we add the sentence, with the exception of retail facilities operating at the time of the enactment of this ordinance, comma, and then change the N to be a lowercase n at the beginning of 5.05040, separation part of Section B, to this ordinance.
I second that.
All right, there's a second. Any questions about it? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? No, any extensions?
Where's the redhead? This is the time when I'm going to prove to you that I am the bigger man.
All right, thank you, Dave.
I agree.
Okay, so we had five ayes, no nays, and no extensions. Okay, thank you. Are there any other things that we should do to change this ordinance before we have our first reading? Okay, any other questions?
You would have, if I understand where you are now, you would have a motion to waive the reading and introduce the ordinance as amended.
Okay, we don't have to do the whole reading?
No, we have to waive the reading.
I make a motion that we waive the reading and accept the amended...
Okay, waive the reading and introduce ordinance, whatever the number is.
5.5B.
CC 5.5A.
A.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you, Dave. I'm not aware of waiving the readings. Generally, Randy always advises us to do by number and title only. Is that just a difference?
Same thing.
Same thing?
Yeah, introduce by number, title, waive the reading.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I don't think someone wants to sit here and I can read that whole...
As amended.
I'm sure nobody wants that, as amended. And that was your motion, right? Okay, is there a second?
Go for it.
Again, I think Marty got in there first. Seconded by Marty, thank you. Now that we have a motion and a second, I just want to address a couple of the other points that were brought up during public comment. Just so that we have an opportunity to answer some of those questions. Could people ask good questions, I know?
Why don't you vote first?
Why don't we finish with...
Okay, good idea. Okay, we have a motion by Dave and a second by Marty. All in favor? Aye?
We're just voting on A.
That's correct. Ordinance 5.58.
A.
A.
A. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous? Thank you. I want to just take a moment to...
Basically, ordinance 5.5B is already incorporated also into A. So can we have a motion and dispense with that? And then, you know, answer whatever questions we're...
We don't need to, we accept it.
No, we are... The plan is to be voted on.
Okay.
Okay? We're doing both readings at the same time. The second reading is going to be one or the other.
If you enact, if you enact this as the second reading next time, you will not have to vote on the second reading of the first time.
Yes.
All right, is everyone, everyone understanding that that's the strategy that we set forth? So we should complete that before I answer any other questions?
Right.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 5.58B?
I'll make a motion to...
To waive the reading?
To waive the reading of motion 5.58B.
Introduce it for first reading.
Introduce it for first reading.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Is there a second? I think Marty beat us here.
I have worked on this for so long that...
She should be able to second.
I would like to have this, so I have one.
Thank you.
They probably win in a duel.
Stay over here.
I wasn't so prepared.
All right, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous as well, there are no objections? Okay. Because the kind people of this town have sat through our lengthy discussion, I just wanted to address the concern about multifamily structures. That's addressed in state law as well. But can you explain that for us, Mr. Kenny?
Oh, residence is a residence.
If I got six different residences living there, I could have six people...
No.
It's not an apartment building.
You presented that it's six plants per residence, not residence.
And that's, that's... I'll get there in a second. But in the state law, if they had said per... Per partial, then an apartment building or something like that, or, let's say not an apartment building, but where there are partial where there's multiple residences on it, which is common, couldn't, you know, one person can have all six parts. So that's, that would be fair. So that's the reason why they get a partial, not the partial language, but per residence.
So just to be clear, to let me and the world understand, apartment A can have six, apartment B can have six, apartment C can have six.
Let me tell you what's going to happen to this world. The person that lives in apartment A, the person that lives in apartment B, the person that lives in apartment C, you can have a lease. And that lease is going to have a provision of, with the landlord. And the landlord, you regulate, prohibit, or do whatever they want.
That's correct.
Right.
Thank you, okay.
And that also applies to rental houses.
Any kind of property that you rent.
Any owner can prohibit, you know, that, if you're renting out houses, so.
That's correct. I just wanted, is it Roberta?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the issue that you brought up about smell, just briefly. There are provisions in the ordinance, regulations, on dispensaries, everything that's permitted, cultivation facilities, all of that, to have filtration systems to mitigate those issues. By law, the AUMA, the one that passed in November, says you can't see it or smell it. So if you can see or smell it, they're not compliant with the state law. We're sort of codifying that and adding on, you know, proper filtration system, those kinds of things. Because we want to preserve our shopping history and all that too. So part of what having an ordinance in place allows us to regulate it, we can collect permitting fees, regulatory fees, and we can actually have coenforcement make sure that that's policed in our city. So that's why that's important.
Another one of the questions and aspects, here's the children aspect of it. I was curious, does that come into play as far as the permitting? The permitting part of it? How do people go about, who's doing the approval? Who's saying, you get, you permit? You, who's doing that?
We haven't gotten to that yet. We're working on that.
Okay, all right, John.
The city will be granting permits, the permits will have condition on it.
Okay.
They'll decide what they are.
The final thing is, Mr. Totten asked a question about how this relates to medical. This, in my view, 215 is still in place at least for another year. And if you have a script from your doctor for more than the six plants, this restriction is not applied at that, that's a medical issue, correct?
Yeah, I don't know what, for our purposes, there's no difference between medicals and regulation. And somebody has a right. And the difference in medical really has to do with taxes?
At this point, yeah.
Yeah, so, and there was a discussion about Prop 215. There's lots of misconception about 215. Prop 215 was a get out of jail free card. It had to do with enforcement of the penal code. It did not do anything to the city's authority to regulate land use.
Correct, okay. Thank you. So was there an answer to that? I attempted to answer, but did you, was that a different answer than what I gave?
No.
Oh, that was the same, okay.
That was just a...
Yes, okay.
For first.
I think the answers are, understanding as so far, is that with the modifications that are happening, their view is the same. If that is accurate continues for, I would expect the answer for you would be six total, not six plus six. But that is still being developed, so I think the answer is still coming.
Even for two people?
Correct.
The state said that for 2018, the 215 stuff is still in place, as far as I understand. The state may make other changes, given the fact that SB 94 is law. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Kenny. Did you want to...
I don't really, absolutely. It's not a lot of pointless questions.
The reefer madness is over.
I want to just thank everyone who participated in the discussion. It's extremely helpful for us to make a decision. Can we have a five-minute recess? Thank you. Come on! This is, this is B, SB 1, gas tax project funding. Mr. Grant?
Are we going to, um, reach upon a senator, fill a council member, or do we start without her?
Oh, yeah, shoot, sorry about that.
What is this?
It's like Home Alone here.
Shoot, I'm...
Ms. Julie, what's the number on this resolution?
Six.
Yeah, can you go back to Marty?
I will try to click it.
Cuffs, use cuffs! Yeah, unnecessary, dancer! Yeah, Josh, yeah!
I'm not saying it's a dancer. I'm just saying it's unnecessary.
Actually, you know, part of it is she's walking under her power. That would be a fun reaction.
Okay, actually, I actually...
She can't write that.
I'm changing it.
Taser.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, can you watch Josh's tapes?
What we all know, why everybody...
Wanna jump?
If it's okay, I'd like to move item C. I'd like to swap item C and B, because we have a person, Mr. Preston Dickinson, who traveled a long way.
No objection.
Okay.
No objection.
So we're gonna move on to item C right now, we'll come back to item B, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Um, this is item 13C, the federal wireless bill. Mr. Grantigan?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, the, there was a senate bill that was with the state that came before you prior in regards to the loss of wealth control and the placement of the cell towers.
SB 649.
That's correct, yes. Uh, which, they stood to, stood on the capitol steps as part of that. Uh, well, there is now legislation that's going to the federal level. I'm looking through my notes, I hope it's not even here. Uh, let's see, to, to adopt regulation to do the same kind of thing nationwide. Um, let's see. Sorry, took it out of order here.
Here it is. Two one.
Yep, I have it. Okay, uh... Um, yeah, I'm, I've lost my place, sorry. But essentially, the, the League of California Cities has, has requested that the agencies send a letter to their legislators in, in support to not allow this bill to go forward, just like they, they did in the state level. Uh, there is a draft letter that was put in place for your consideration that would go to our senators, Ted Gaines, our congressman, Philip Lamafa, and also the Senator Diana Feinstein, Stein, and Senator Harris up in Washington.
Really, so three?
Yeah, there's three letters. One, the, the last letter is addressed to our senators in Washington.
So these letters are in opposition?
They are.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions about this?
Just...
No?
No, from Marty, okay?
Just so we're all understanding that, that we tried this, it got vetoed. What they're trying now is to take it out of state's hands and let the federals do it, the fed. So that's what, the way I've been, and I know, so that's what they're trying to do.
Right, right. So the state legislature passed and stuff, 649, got vetoed by the governor. We were in opposition to that legislation. We expressed as the councilors opposition to that legislation on the recommendation of League of California Cities. Now that that's been vetoed by the governor, there is now legislation at the federal level, and these are the letters of opposition to our federal representatives. Okay?
Okay, I found my talking points. The talking points from the League of California City, uh, mentioned just this year, the wireless industry attempted to pursue similar legislative legislation in California with SB 649. Uh, failed when it was met with overwhelming opposition from over 325 cities. As, as drafted, this bill would shift authority away from residents, businesses, and communities over to for-profit industries whose interest and shareholder利益 turns out in the considerations for the health, safety, aesthetics, and public benefit of the people who serve California cities. Share the goal of ensuring all of our residents have access to affordable, reliable, high-speed broadband, and eagerly welcome new wireless infrastructure that is installed in collaboration with local governments. The draft bill pending introduction is problematic in its current form because it would impose sharply reduced shop clock time limits for local governments to process potentially unlimited wireless facility applications for all sizes. It's deemed, deemed granted application for facilities where local governments are unable to meet stringent time limits. Can result in improved applications regardless of their safety, health, or environmental impacts. And lastly, it interferes with local governments' management of their own property and their ability to receive appropriate compensation for issues.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Are there any questions about this before we have public comment? I know Mr. Dickinson is, would like to make some comments. So all in the podium, and you could do so. Thank you. And anyone else can do?
Hi, Preston Dickinson. I'm an independent contractor with AT&amp;T, and I live in Chico. And thank you for moving this up on the agenda. I, do you have, Mike, I have a question primarily, more than a comments, because I, I did talk to Dave before this meeting and, and did circulate a question. Is there an attempt taking place on, to federalize a similar bill to SB 649? And nobody was aware of anything of that nature. So what, do we have a bill number? Because it sounds like the League of Cities are, are perceiving whatever legislation is being worked on as another approach to accomplish the table.
There's a draft bill.
And do you know what the draft bill number is?
I'll look into secrets in the letter I'm asking.
It's not anything I have, because I looked for it earlier.
And, and, and what I would like to say is if anybody can find that and shoot it to me, I'll have my email address. I would love to know what it is, and I will do some, some research and then get back to you. Um, you know, I had told Dave and, and Price as well, I would love to see small cell technology come to Dunce, you know, and I hope that that's something that, that I see AT&amp;T propose. And, and I understand the city's approach to the, the resistance to, you know, because it was kind of a morbid...
Shove down our throat.
You said so. But, but there are some real benefits. I, I'm beginning to think that possibly this legislation that they're talking about is, is wireless towers and, and the amount of time that it takes to get through the process, and they're wanting to shorten that process time. But I'd really love to, to find out what the legislation is so I can do some research and kind of get back to you guys, but, okay?
Yeah, can, I'm sorry, if there are any more public comments, it does seem like there are. Let, let me just, it's okay, we're gonna break, 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 briefly. The, um, can we put Mr. Dickinson in contact with Charles, our representative, our regional representative of League of California Cities? He'll definitely be able to, he's a legislative rep, and he'll know a lot more about this than any of us.
So if you're gonna shoot me, so you got this contact or email, do you need?
We can email here if you have a meeting, or, uh, I can give it to you right there. We'll give you his email address immediately.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, does that mean we could want to table this, I presume?
Why?
Uh, no, I mean, he needs to send his letters off.
Why is it we need people?
Because he wanted to get more information, and I felt that Mike was meant to help us make a decision, or not?
Do you have a problem? I don't have any problem making this decision.
This is a recognition from the League of Cities.
I didn't, I didn't understand that. I didn't know if you were asking that you wanna hold off until we learn more about it, but if we're ready to go, I'm fine with that, too.
I think, um, listen, my thing is, I wanna know more about the legislation too, but I'm okay with the, with the draft letters as well, just because they're not, they talked about the legislation in its current form. And this legislation, if I can stand its current form, it's, first of all, it's a draft, so, um, it's, it's just showing our concern at this point. And it's, the idea that the feds care about, that's what it is. But, no, we should look it up.
Well, I just, even the governor didn't care about, you know, what the cities thought, when they vetoed the bill.
Well, no, that's, that's the exact opposite. They vetoed the bill in favor of what the cities, of all those cities said in opposition. Um, okay, so, so I just, let's, let's make sure Mr. Dickinson has Charles's contact information, and can, and, and let's all do, do as much as we can to understand more about the legislation as well. Is there a motion?
I don't have a verbiage, but I make a motion that we, um, authorize the mayor to sign the letters as suggested by the League of California Cities.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Are there any questions about the motion? Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, Bruce said it. Thank you. No, no votes. Okay. We're gonna move on.
Are you getting that for him?
Yeah, I thought I had it on my phone, but I couldn't find it. Well, I've got your card.
Can I, can I get this tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll get it to you.
I didn't get it to you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, folks, thank you so much.
Do I say it? Say how your dad for me?
You sure you don't have to stay the night here?
You know, my dad lived in B-95 when he passed, you know, he came to a...
He did? He was here, I met him there.
And he'd haul him around with me to meetings, and he loved it. But thank you for asking.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item B, SB 1, gas tax project funding.
Okay, uh, what we have here is, um, the, the, there is a, the SB 1 project was, get back to the place here, was put in place recently to help, um, address the significant multimode transportation money shortfall here in California. And, uh, there, there was a gas tax that was passed recently, and we're feeling that tax now at the pump. And, uh, what they're allowing is for agencies to put together a, a project list that would identify projects that the city would want to use that additional funds to go towards. Uh, it's also part of the transparency accountability for where that money's gonna go towards. Um, originally, the deadline was, was, I believe, in October, which has already passed. Um, and they extended it until, up until December. Uh, so we still qualify to, to apply for those funds. Uh, I've been talking with our engineers, basically engineering, they actually assisted in helping getting us to this point right here, uh, so that we can get a resolution and possibly to Picasso, so chooses to apply for the money for this additional gas tax fund. Um, one of the things that we talked about was, well, what, what kind of projects this should be put together? And the one that was the easiest and kind of off the shelf was the sidewalk project that we went to the LTC recently for, for our RSDP money. And they, they didn't have this full amount, uh, but we got enough to go get started. So we're looking at, at an estimated amount of, just over nine thousand, well, nine thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars was estimated for the city of Dunce here, uh, and looking at putting that money towards the sidewalk project, uh, to help get more out of the project. So we'll go as far as we can if we receive that money in the engineering and construction of that project.
I have one question. I have a few questions.
Okay, well, let's start with you. Okay. Go ahead, Marty.
Go ahead, Dave.
No, go ahead.
I wanted to know what happens, because there's, uh, you know, there's provisions floating to repeal that gas tax. And, um, from what I read, there's a good chance of it passing. So what would happen to this, with that whole gas tax, um, is...
Um, the funding still, will still be there. Uh, the, the, the point is to get the, the application in. If it gets repealed, there's still money that's gonna be there. There's still the funding. If we don't get it in, we don't pay the money.
Well, why do you have a fact that funds, you know, that the general fund is going to be affected?
The money, uh, if received, will go into the general fund, and then come out.
Anyone else, questions? My question is, um, SB 1 was more than just gas taxes, those vehicle filtration fees. Is there a separate application process to, for those monies?
Not that I'm aware of. This is the only, uh, the funding that I would say were, that's available to, to the city of Dunce.
Okay, I think we need to look into that. I mean, it's probably a simple question to ask.
Yeah, I talked with our engineers about, uh, the funding, this was the only funding that's...
So is this, so in your opinion, is this listed as gas tax, just as a catchall? It means SB 1 funding?
Yeah, it's SB 1 money portion, the, the new gas tax money that's brought. So there's separate, there's other gas tax funds, but this is in addition to those funds is SB 1 funding.
That's what it's called, SB 1 funding.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Nine thousand dollars a year is there, is the estimate?
That's what we were told. Uh, they sent out a projection to all the cities, uh, saying, based on what your, maybe our staff tells, this is what your estimated receipt is.
But it should not just be gas sales, it should be, be more...
It's due for frustrations. It's what, it was what came from the state. It may come in higher, but this is what they projected, you know, they, they put out the projection to all cities. Uh, this is what your, if you apply, the product, this is what your estimated amount is. That, that number is from the state, not from...
Okay, I'd love to think it goes a little bit of calculation, but thank, thank you for answering that. Any other questions, Bruce?
I'm kind of a little bit confused here. Are we talking about having to match what they're gonna be giving us?
No.
Okay.
This would be in addition, though, to what we were, what we're applying for and receiving from the LTC.
Okay.
Do the funds get plumbed through the LTC?
Okay.
I believe they do.
So do we have to go to LTC for another request?
No, no. No, this application, this application goes to the LTC.
Okay.
They get the money for cash.
Is there a timeline? Do, are they gonna veto it or...
You said it was December, right?
Uh, well, that's the deadline for us to send the application and resolution. So this has to be approved by our resolution, and a budget, there's been, our budget amendment should apply.
I'm sorry, Marty, did you mean a timeline to receive the funds for the deadline of resolution?
Yeah, it's still going there, wanting to make any kind of decision.
I don't know.
Okay. Good question. All right, let's have public comment on this item. What do you think? Just the MVPs, much, okay. Thank you, um, is there a motion?
I move the Doc Resolution number 2017 dash 16, amending the 2017, 2018 budget in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars for SB 1 funding to support the 2018 sidewalk project.
Is there no authorization needed to...
Because we're receiving them.
To submit the application? It's just a budget amendment?
This is a resolution that needed.
Okay.
And, and a budget amendment, I bet it's a budget amendment that's sure...
Okay, thank you.
That we leave the...
No, no, because we're not spending any when we're receiving.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, we're vote, all in favor?
Aye.
It was unanimous. Okay. Uh, uh, is the, is the, item D, the UP, um, can I just start this off? I'm sorry that there's really no one here in front of the public at this point.
Did you expect anything different, Frank?
Well, I mean, we could've put it at the beginning, but that, I mean, I think it's fine, but, um, had the public known about this, I do think that there is, there is public opposition. Well, Don mentioned it tonight. There are the people who, um, don't wanna see those buildings go. My thought at this point is, they're, they're a liability to the city, but more importantly, they're a liability to UP. That's why they're making this decision to remove them from the lease.
Right, she said buildings. Are we just talking about the one building?
We're talking about two buildings.
The two buildings, side by side.
No, 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 not, not two side by side buildings. We're talking about the engine house, which is, people know what that big building is. The other building that is on the docket...
No, the other one's not on this one. No, the other one's not on this one.
Oh, it's not on this one?
Yeah.
Just the engine house. Just for curiosity, what's the second building, man?
The other building that UP is looking at, and I thought was part of this, but it's not, apparently, is the building that is north of the Depot Museum.
The House.
Not the House, there's a building there that's dilapidated, falling apart. They use it for storage, though.
Yeah, on the hillside?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And because I know that this was going to be on the agenda tonight, I invited Blake Michelson, who's the, I don't know his title, but he's the-
He has ties to the brothers.
He's the Depot Historical Society. He's the-
He's more in contact.
Yeah. He's the son-in-law of Tony Scaulco.
Okay.
Who's really involved in Carroll. And he understands what's going on there, and he was actually here earlier, but had to go, looks like. And I know that he was, I asked him to come to just talk about it, but he's told me, just so you all know, that he understands the situation with UP, and they'll be able to move what they have stored in that north building, they'll find other storage for it. That building is a liability, it's, people break in there and-
But the one we're concerned right now is the-
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you, sorry.
No, then, you are correct, though, it might as well, there's two areas we wanted to adjust our lease for. What I have in front of me right now, it came in the mail about four weeks ago, and they changed the line of where we currently hold the lease, to remove the engine house out of our current lease, but keep our right-of-way to get to the fireworks building.
But that relinquishes us from any responsibilities-
That's right.
And no more has, man.
It lowers our lease as well. It lowers the lease amount.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, okay?
Do you know how much the lease is going to be lowered to?
I don't. They just said that it'd be lowered to the minimum. I have to look back and see if they stayed that in the lease.
I must say, they're paying roughly like $5,000 a month, or is it a year or something like that?
I think it's going to be near $5,000 a year. It used to be $3,000, it's been low, it's raised up now, so I wouldn't be surprised if it was $5,000.
And it's a year, but then it should be down.
They said to their minimum lease amount that they allow.
Can you count it?
I think-
That's one time.
Oh, I thought it was three.
But it used to be three. You're absolutely right, it used to be. Yeah, that's a miss, but we'll check.
Okay. Regardless, it's, this action will lower the lease. That's not it.
I'd like to ask, Mark, do you see any downside of this?
The only downside, personally, I don't see a downside, but publicly, there could be a perception of a loss of-
There's always going to be publicly a perception of-
Right, I look at it as a lot of-
You don't have money to renovate that, and you want to, uh-
And it's an $80,000 fix, just to keep it.
Well, then, it's a mess, you know? People can just get in there and hurt themselves and hurt me, and we're most reliable.
It's just going to make it stressless. Let's have public comment on this item? Any close to having a public comment?
We got three people in the audience here.
I guess we're authorizing city manager to-
No, we need to now.
Who needs to sign the lease?
I can sign the lease, or the mayor. It'd be fine if I signed.
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign the lease.
My one question is, do we know by changing this place that that building will be removed?
We know that is-
That's kind of the gap knowledge that I have.
We know that-
I didn't hear your comment.
I'll restate that, he's asking if we know that by changing the lease in this way, that the building will be removed, and we know that that's the intention of UP at this time.
Right.
I've heard that verbally, that I'm looking at them.
From, from UP.
Of both facilities. Though other facility as well, it's not part of this, it's changed. Well, I'm sure we can adapt this council.
Well, one other question I have, I'm so sorry, my job with this whole thing, is that this topic was discussed in the planning commission, I'd say, and what was their conversation to see if we had any reason to keep it, or?
You noticed the minutes, Dave?
Yeah.
I didn't read anything in the minutes.
This wasn't part of the planning commission.
That's all the minutes, that's what you're saying.
Was there public comment?
There was a discussion afterwards that, I believe it was either Barbara and Powers brought up, that they had heard that the engine house may be torn down. And the only real comment was Don Harley, as he said to Mike, said, "It's really a shame that the store, Mr. Ork, wouldn't..."
He also said-
Thank you, was honestly-
Yeah, they changed that.
I know.
Waited a long time to see that.
Okay, the only reason I'm really upset is because I hadn't heard about it, but I had someone message me about two and a half weeks ago asking about this, saying, "Have you heard this is going to be torn down?" I said, "Well, number one, I haven't heard anything about that. Number two, the cost is lots of money we don't have, so it's not going anywhere." And so, I, essentially, gave him the tone, and I was like, "Hey, just kidding." So. You can say the city's not tearing it down. The city's not paying to tear it down.
I made sure they authorized-
I heard it is.
Oh. Because it was a second? I'll second it.
Okay, thanks. Bruce?
I just want to make clear to the, anyone that might watch this video down the line, that the reason we're doing this to be very clear is because there's an asbestos hazard there and can't be used until we solve that, and that, as we've looked at, costs tens of $80,000 or so. So, if somebody wants to pony up enough money to do that, maybe they could talk with UP, but I think our, our-
Right, and there's no indication from UP that even if that building, if the city were to incur those costs to abate the asbestos in that building, that they wouldn't, that they would still consider it to be a liability in some way?
They still want to change that lease.
They still want to change the lease.
Yeah.
The other thing that's good is that if we, I don't know, politically, if we say yes to this, maybe they'll say yes to some things that we're asking for.
That's all for a second.
It's always good. But that's not why we're doing this, it's-
No, but that's always the best, if you're, stop putting lockbox in anyway.
We have a motion in a second? Okay, let's call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. You can sign the lease, thank you. And can I just ask that we direct staff to prioritize that, please, and get that back to her as soon as possible?
I'll do that in a minute.
Thank you.
If we could get an notification before work happens on that, I could have an interest in-
You can have one.
I said I have an interest in taking pictures of it before it goes down.
Thank you, Josh. Would you start speaking into the microphone?
We could also have a, too. Get us, also have a demolition party, you know, when it comes down, and then we go down, take pictures, you know?
Bring in the air, just-
Yeah, that'd be cool.
That's right.
They do all kinds of stuff.
They were, remember that time, they're not-
The two things I would like, Mr. Mayor, to reiterate, one, contract TV, two, cards, a little, what's it called?
QR code.
QR code on our business cards.
Well, let me just say that, while Sidney's here, Sidney, can we meet on the contract? Let's say, by the end of March or something? Is that possible? Okay. So, we'll have a conversation. It's really, it's a contract issue. So, please come to the council, the contract house, to get a couple of, of, as far as the cards, Julie, you could, sorry, could you talk with-